Okay, I'm showing 6:30, so if I can get everybody to their seats, we can get started. I don't want to make it look like I'm holding meetings late now that I'm getting to be a short timer. Do you have our lights going yet? Okay. City Council meeting for October 3, 2011, now come to order. Remember all times indicated, next agenda items or approximate start times only. Please turn off cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Natale.
Here.
Mayor Protem Snyder.
She's out ill.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
We'll be here shortly.
Okay.
So, if she's going to be here shortly.
Do we know that, though?
Councilman Moreno, would you mind pressing her present button?
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Teeter.
She is also out ill.
Councilman Diaz.
I'm here.
Councilman McAldowney.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mayor Natale, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will the audience please rise for a moment of silence and then join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
And during the moment of silence, if we could keep in mind our friend and longtime Commerce City activist Bobby Crawl, whose memorial services were this past weekend.
Also, one of the candidates for mayor, Robert Haves, his mom died three days ago. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, would you please pass around the microphone for introductions?
Kerry Coon.
George Maxi.
Ellen Haug.
Harvis Thomas.
Bill McColl.
Joy Bishop.
Gene Lefel, Board of Adjustment.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Paul Workman, Planning Staff.
Jerry Draper, Planning Staff.
Chris Kramer, Planning Division.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Jim Hayes, Community Development.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Travis Ranniger.
Lyle Murray.
Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, City Council and staff would like to recognize Community Planning Month, and we have a proclamation that we will read. Is there anybody from planning that'd like to come up and say a few words first? Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, I'm very excited to be here in front of you. October is National Community Planning Month. The theme this year, it's to help communities reflect on how planners help envision the future and address the needs of communities. I think this is especially timely theme for Commerce City. As you know, over the past few years, we've helped community with a comprehensive plan and land development code. But then, in the year coming up, we're certainly going to help address the needs of the community through the station area plan that is starting shortly around the Fast Track Station, as well as the visioning exercise for the Dog Track property, which we all are very excited for. So, I think this is a very timely event, and we're excited to be here.
Okay, thank you. I would like to request Councilperson McAldowney to read the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the office of the mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, a proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, burrows, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Commerce City, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Commerce City, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2011 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Commerce City in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Okay, thank you. Does somebody want to receive that? Thank you. I guess I was neglect during our moment of silence that, do you remember that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month? I noticed a couple of us are wearing pink today from the weekend, so keep them all in your prayers. It's something that's probably touched every, somebody in everybody's life. So, like to recognize that also. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moreno.
Do we have to approve the proclamation?
Oh, you know, that would probably be a fairly good idea. Is there any discussion? Okay, not seeing. Mr. Moreno, would you like to make the motion?
Move approval of the Community Planning Month proclamation.
Mr. Diaz.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Take a week off, you forget everything, you know? Okay, Citizen Communication. Public comment roster is made available on the table at the entrance of council chambers for those who wish to address council. When I call your name, would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record? You're reminded each speaker is limited to three minutes. City councils are reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate, may ask clarifying questions, and express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get necessary information to solve issues. Tonight, we just have one person on the list. Mr. Lefel. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Gene Lefel, 6530 Brighton Boulevard. That's the Garden Terrace subdivision established in 1922. Come on, Bob, it wasn't that funny. I've got two important announcements to announce tonight. I'd like to let everybody know that on Saturday, October 8, from 10 to 1 p.m. at the Reunion Rec. Center, also known as the Red Barn, there'll be a meet and greet for all the candidates. That includes all the city council candidates, District 14 candidates, and 27J candidates. Once again, that's Saturday, October 10, 10 to 1 p.m., Red Barn reunion. Bring your own refreshments, and everybody's welcome, all candidates, all citizens, and everybody else. Additionally, I'd like to remind everybody that the Haunted House is open, and I didn't see too many people up there that I recognized from around this immediate area, but certainly, everybody is welcome to come up and actually see me happen to be working at the Haunted House, and I won't scare you too bad. And if you're really brave, we might be able to see our way through to let you go on in. So, please, come see me at the Mile High Events Center, 64th and Highway 2, at the Haunted House. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we only have one set of minutes before council this evening for approval. There are the minutes of the meeting of August 15, 2011. Before voting on those minutes, I need a motion to allow Councilman McAldowney to abstain from voting because of his excused absence. Mr. Moreno?
Move to allow Councilman McAldowney to abstain from voting on the minutes.
Ms. Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman McAldowney from, to abstain from voting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Okay, motion passes. I would now take a motion, Mr. McAldowney, oh, sorry, Ms. Carson again.
Motion to approve minutes from regular meeting of August 15, 2011.
Ms. Moreno?
Second the motion.
The motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 15. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. There are four items on the consent agenda this evening. Councils are reminded these items can be removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes at the request of any council member. Does anyone wish to remove? Mr. Moreno?
Move, move to allow, or, sorry, move to remove Resolution 64, 65, and 66 from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay, Mr. Gaylor. So, the consent agenda, the only one we will do is 54? Okay. Do we need a motion not to do those, or we can just pull those off? Okay, so what I need now is a motion to approve only Resolution 2011-54 on the consent agenda.
Could we have that motion as a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Diaz?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-54: Resolution Regarding Permission for Discharge of Firearms Within the City of Commerce City."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please, all, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please. Okay, the vote is seven yeses. Consent agenda is approved. Mr. Gaylor, well, I guess we'll start through the first one. Mr., this would be Resolution 2011-64. Mr. Flannery.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm going to bring this to Mr. McBroom for his, for his handling, but I would like to ask the question of the council, is this, are these items that would be, as a rule of thumb, something you would not want to have on the consent agenda?
Mr. Moreno?
For my own benefit, I just have a couple of questions about the actual proposals. And as my understanding, if an item is placed on the consent agenda, it is not eligible for discussion. So, that was my motivation for removing them from the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a legal question, Mr. Gaylor, that maybe you could help us with. If this, if this does happen where there are questions on the consent agenda, and they were handled prior to the meeting, would that be unallowable?
That, that would certainly be appropriate. If the person, council member, has questions and he gets them answered before the meeting, that, that would be appropriate, because these are not quasi-judicial issues. So, it's perfectly proper to discuss them before the meeting. In the absence of that, removing them from the consent agenda is the right solution.
Okay, terrific. Mr. Flannery, back to you. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McBroom.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you have about the three resolutions, but, or some very brief background. These three resolutions seek the city council's permission to submit three grant applications to Adams County Community Development to apply for grants from the Community Development Block Grant Program. In all three cases, the grant funds that we are seeking are extra Adams County Community Development Block Grant Funds that have not been used elsewhere in Adams County. We received word just a few weeks ago that these funds were available. City staff met to develop a list of projects that were high on the city's priority list but hadn't otherwise been funded. The first resolution is to resurface the existing parking lots at Fairfax Park in conjunction with the, the rest of the Fairfax Park renovation project.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. McBroom, is this, I understand that these are unexpendited CDBG funds on the county level. Will we be competing with other municipalities for the remainder, remaining balance of those funds?
Good evening, Councilman Moreno and members of council. The answer is no, we will be competing. What they're looking is for small projects such as these three projects that can be approved and move onto contracting very quickly. And so, they're, they're pretty much given a verbal approval to these three.
Great, and the justification for these three programs is, my understanding is that because they are programs that can be done very quickly, I imagine before the CDBG funds actually expire, is that correct?
That's correct, and the key here, I think, Mr. McBroom already mentioned, is these are county allocated dollars. These were not part of the Commerce City allocation. Those were already used in a, in an earlier project. So, yeah, they want to make sure that those are spent before the end of the year, before they have to return them back to the federal government.
Great, and the last question I had was, were these projects chosen specifically because they fit within the criteria for use of CDBG funds? Or just that they were high priority and low, low amount of time to turnaround projects?
I would say yes to all three of those. Relatively high priority, fairly quick turnaround time for the city, and we understood that they'd met eligibility.
Thank you.
Were you going to have any questions on the others, or is that for all three? Any other discussion on any of those three? Mr. McAldowney?
I think just to speak to Mr. Flannery's point earlier about having items like this on the consent agenda. I mean, to me, the, the shame of having this on a consent agenda is that you oftentimes look right past what I think we heard more of here, which is, there was an opportunity present that we might not have otherwise been able to take advantage of. Staff was tuned into that opportunity and was able to align so that we could take advantage of it. And I think it's important for us and for the community to know that you guys are out doing that. And so, by effectively bearing it on the consent agenda, it takes away the opportunity for you to take credit for what is a, is a potentially a good win for us, especially in light of our recent discussions about, you know, where are we going to get those extra dollars to, to tackle just such projects? So, thank you for the, the effort across staff to put us in line for these. And with that, I'd be, if there are no other questions open, for making a motion on the first.
Okay. Mr. McAldowney, want to make a motion on Resolution 2011-64?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-64.
Mr. Moreno?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-64. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Authorizing Application for Community Development Block Grant for Fairfax Park Parking Lot Improvements."
Okay. Will voice votes work on these, or, okay. Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now take a motion for Resolution 2011-65. Mr. Moreno?
Move approval of Resolution 2011-65.
Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-65. Will the city attorney please read the title?
"Application for Community Development Block Grant for Pioneer Park Improvements."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. I'll now entertain a motion for Resolution 2011-66. Mr. McAldowney?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-66.
Mr. Diaz? Diaz?
Second the motion.
Sorry. A motion and a second. City attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Authorizing Application for Community Development Block Grant for Recreation Center Security Cameras."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now move on to a public hearing. There is one item under the public hearing and one item under resolutions that are interrelated. Ordinance Z-776-05-11 and Resolution 2011-57 in Case S-582-11 will be presented together but voted on separately. Want to start by opening the public hearing. Will City Manager Jerry Flannery please invite staff up to review the case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I believe Mr. Workman is already up here, so with that, I'll just turn it over to him.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and honourable members of city council. Staff's particularly excited to be here this evening. This set of cases represents a lot of culmination, a lot of hard work from both Suncor, their team, and city staff. We've been collaborating now for the better part of six, seven months on this project. It will facilitate the development of a new 74,000-square-foot office building on the subject property. In addition, it also allows us to foreshadow the continued collaborative work that we've done with the applicant in order to try and rezone their refinery operations to a PUD. So, there's a lot of good work going on between the city and Suncor at this, at this moment, and we look forward to continuing that momentum. So, with that, there are two cases this evening. The first is Case Z-776-05-11 and S-582-11. Subject property is located at the intersection of Brighton Boulevard and York Street. Again, the applicant is Suncor Energy, and their request is twofold this evening. The first is to amend an existing planned unit development, and the second is the approval of a consolidation plat. This is an aerial of the subject property. Again, currently zoned PUD, Brighton Boulevard to the southeast, York Street to the west. This image also highlights the interior lot lines that exist currently on the property that the applicant will be eliminating in order to develop that property. In addition, on the south side of Brighton Boulevard, there's a tiny little leftover piece that is currently unplatted. The plat will formally plat that into a lot and block. However, it will retain its current I-3 zoning. It will not be part of the proposed PUD. City's comprehensive plan calls this area out generally for general industrial sorts of uses. And again, another aerial of the subject property with Brighton Boulevard on the right-hand portion of the screen and York Street on the left-hand, again highlighting the interior lot lines that will be erased as part of the consolidation plat. And then, the small parcel on the south side of Brighton Boulevard located in the right-hand corner. So, this is the proposed plat from the applicant. Essentially, it is two blocks and three lots. The first lot is Lot 1 of Block 1, which is highlighted in red. That area generally corresponds to Area A of the PUD and will be where the office building is located. Lot 2 of Block 1 is highlighted in the green area. That is Lot 2 of Block 1 and generally corresponds to Area B of the planned unit development. And then, again, the parcel on the south side of Brighton Boulevard to retain the I-3 zoning that it currently has. Currently, the planned unit development for this particular property is broken up into two separate areas, Area A and Area B. Area A is currently defined by a 200-foot buffer behind both Brighton Boulevard and York Street. That currently allows for all I-2 uses. And then, the rest of the site is designated as an Area B, and all I-3 uses in the land development code are allowed in that area there. So, in order to more efficiently construct the office building and to better meet the needs of Suncor, they have proposed to amend the planned unit development. That amendment essentially will redefine Area A and allow essentially just the proposed office building in that area. Area B will essentially be rezoned to allow I-2 sorts of uses that will mostly be taken advantage of by the applicant as accessory uses to their office and the adjacent refinery and things of that nature. This is the proposed site plan that's been submitted by the applicant. Again, Area A in the corner there with the office building located in the center of Area A, and then, Area B back behind that with Brighton Boulevard on the right and York Street on the left. This is the outdoor storage plan that's been submitted by the applicant, essentially broken into three separate areas identified with dust-free surface on the ground and identify different areas as to when and how that, those different areas would be screened if and when they are used by the applicant. And then, this is the landscape plan that's been proposed by the applicant. Again, Area A where the office building will go, surrounded by very lush landscaping. And then, in addition, there are some public improvements along both Brighton and York Street, detached sidewalk, tree lawn, very nice landscaping. This is the rendering for the proposed building. This is the northeast view of the proposed structure. The northwest view. And then, this is the southeast view, so basically from Brighton Boulevard. And then, this is the southwest view, basically from York Street. In analyzing the two applications, Planning Commission began with the plat. Sort of a two-pronged review process. The first is reviewing it for technical criteria. They determined that the application is compliant with the comp plan goals, and it meets the standards laid out in the planned unit development. They also looked at more of some of the, you know, external benefits that would come of this application. The first is that it consolidates the area that, that's the intersection of Brighton Boulevard and York Street and allows the development. The second is that it plats that property on the south side of Brighton Boulevard, which is certainly in the best interest of both the applicant and the city. And then, moving on to the PUD, again, started with the technical analysis. The first is that the proposed PUD is compliant with the comp plan goals. It is compliant with the future land use plan, and that it does meet the approval criteria for a PUD in the land development code. And then, again, looking at sort of those external benefits. It does, the, the planned unit development will provide more predictability for both the applicant and the city in terms of the allowable uses and, and, you know, what they need to look like and that sort of stuff. And then, in addition, it's also, will help to facilitate the business retention and expansion of an important corporate citizen here in Commerce City, and generally improves the area. A new 74,000-square-foot Silver Lead certified building at this intersection would certainly be an upgrade and certainly be an improvement for that area and a real momentum builder. So, with that, Planning Commission voted to forward to city council a unanimous recommendation for approval for both applications. And that would conclude the staff presentation for this evening, but certainly, if there are questions, staff is available to answer them.
First, okay, hold on. Mr. Moreno? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Workman, you mentioned in Area B would be eligible for outdoor storage, and it looks like in the plan that, you know, we're anticipating future screening for that outdoor storage. So does that mean that the applicant will not be storing materials outside in the present term, or...
The indication from the applicant is that there are no immediate needs once construction begins on the project, but given the nature of the refinery operations, that they envision that that will become a need. At what time, those areas are used for storage and are subject to the screening requirements that will be installed.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else from council? Would the applicant like to come forward and say anything?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would like to introduce Ms. Leisha Burnett and Mr. John Gallagher, if you wish to say a few words.
Thank you for coming. We are really excited about this. Suncor has been a phenomenal community person here, and they've been terrific with everything. You are on. I just need to name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Leisha Burnett. I'm the manager of stakeholder relations for Commerce City, operations for Suncor Energy in addition to the rest of our U.S. assets, but certainly for the flagship part of the U.S. Suncor business, which is the refinery located here in Commerce City. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. The first thing I'd like to do is just to thank all the city staff that has been working with Suncor on this project, specifically all of the members of the Planning Department. I'm sure there are other department people who are drawn on, but certainly, we really appreciate all the effort that has been extended to work with us and partner with us. It's been a great experience for all the members of the Suncor team. I hope that the experience has been equally as good on the part of the city, and I think it just speaks to the synergies that we're really trying to forge, that I think we have been forging, you know, say, over the last several years. So, I just wanted to put that up front first and foremost. This is a great project for Suncor, and we're really excited about the project. It's a great project for our employees that are housed in Commerce City that will now house themselves at this new building. I think it's also a great project, as has already been alluded to, for the city. This is a space that could use a bit of a makeover, and I'm so happy that the space can be the face of Suncor Energy in the city of where our flagship business is located. And it was interesting, I had a conversation with a neighbor, a neighbor company that's in that vicinity, and just happened to be talking high level about the potential of the project, and they were extremely happy. So I do hope that we can continue the partnership as we move forward, hopefully move forward with the project, and that we can all continue to have a great experience. A couple of things I'd like to mention about the project itself. The budget investment that Suncor Energy will be making in this project is $25 million. And I think on the grand scheme of things, that may not seem a lot, but for a corporation that has many, many parts of its business on an international scale, they get to pick and choose where to spend a certain amount of limited capital resources. And for our refinery here in Commerce City to essentially get the thumbs up for our corporate, from our corporation, to spend this money on a new facility for our employees, I think it does a couple of things. I think, one, it speaks to the trust that the corporation has in the long-term viability of our business here, and I also think it speaks to the fact that they know that we are here for the long haul, and I think that's great news for both Suncor here and for the city. So we do hope to be, continue to be a reliable and safe operator and partner with the city moving forward. I think it's important that we talk about the fact that we do and plan to construct this building in a safe manner. We hope to be able to use some environmentally friendly construction methods where at all possible, and hopefully utilize this project as a way to help the local economy, kind of an economic shot in the arm, if you will, for Commerce City. Certainly, it's our intent to look at all options for local suppliers, local supplies, local labor where we can. And as we've done in the past, we would continue to look for those opportunities in the future. So what I'd like to do at this time, unless there's specific questions about the building, you've already heard that it is a two-story building. You've seen the facade, about 75,000 square feet. It'll house approximately 275 employees and contractors, about 400 parking spots. As I said, we will try to look for some environmentally friendly construction methods and certifications, landscaping, obviously, and again, the budget, $25 million. So again, I'd really just like to thank you all for considering the project, and I hope that it's something that we can continue to work with the city on moving forward. I'd like to just take this moment to introduce the rest of the team from Suncor and some of our key business partners that have worked on this project on our side. And if there's any specific technical questions that I can't answer that council may have, we can hand it over to one of these individuals. Tom Anton from Suncor, he's our project manager. Alex Ritchie from our legal department, our senior counsel. Chris Cibilia from Inter Group, he's the lead architect. Brendan Miller from Jacobs, he's our chief engineer. And Jim Johnson from Otten Johnson, he's legal counsel for land use development. And of course, John Gallagher, our vice president of the refineries here, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you again very much, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to help answer them. Thank you.
And I can only speak for myself, but $25 million and 275 employees, that's a great deal. That is not at all a small one. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I just want to thank you because that corner is an eyesore, and the only thing that could have been done to that corner is improve it. Not only did you improve it, you made it, you're going to make it a showcase. So, it's right across from the cemetery, and if they ever start watering the lawn on the cemetery again, and the cemetery lives up to its image, we will have another outstanding corner in Commerce City. So thank you so much. You always wonder what can be done, and then there comes, people come and they figure out what they would like to do, and it works to the city's benefit. Thank you. Thank you, Suncor.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Just a quick comment. I think it's a great benefit for Commerce City and a great benefit for your employees. You know, I understand that they're currently being housed in modular trailers, and this, I'm sure, is going to be a huge step up for them. Also, a step up in terms of, obviously, as Councilman Bullock mentioned, the landscaping in the area and the fact that it is right across the street from Riverside Cemetery, which for those in the know is a tourist attraction, to where a lot of former Colorado governors and former Denver mayors are buried. You know, I think the mayor, Mr. Nutell, was actually just there for a historical tour recently, I think. So, it's going to be a great benefit, and really appreciate your commitment to this community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And since two people brought up Riverside, and it's not part of this particular thing, Riverside will not get water again. The reason that most of those tombstones have the damage that they are is because they were being watered and they were being worn down. So there won't be any positive water going in there. Is there anyone from the audience who would wish to talk to council on this particular Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I would now entertain a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission for Z-776-05-11 in case S-582-11. Mr. Mackel Downey?
So moved.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have had a motion and a second to approve and findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance Z-776-05-11. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance Z-776-05-11. Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Mr. Gallagher, if I could, just a quick legal question. It's staff's understanding that within council's packet, the second reading for the ordinance is listed as November 7th. That should actually be October 24th.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that needs to be part of the reading.
That's good information. It's not required as part of this motion, but that's good information that's on the table here.
Okay.
You approved the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
We did that.
Now you got a motion to approve the ordinance. Is that correct?
And yes, but you need to read that?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Approving Suncor Energy, USA Inc., PUD, First Amendment Attached Here To as Exhibit A and Made a Part Hereof for the Property Generally Located at 5700 York Street, Commerce City, Colorado."
Okay, I have had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Vote is seven yeses. Ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission for Resolution 2011-57 in case S-582-11. Mr. Mackel Downey?
So moved.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2011-57. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Diaz?
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2011-57. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of Resolution 2011-57 reads, "Resolution Approving Consolidation Plat in Case S-582-11."
Motion and second. City attorney has read the title. Need a roll call vote on this? No? Voice vote? Okay, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is Resolution 2011-53, "Resolution Expressing City Council Support for the Ballot Measure Increasing the Mill Levy in Brighton School District," actually, the Mill Levy in School District 27J. Will city attorney Gaylor please explain the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady. Mr. Gallagher?
This item comes before the city council after a presentation that was made by representatives of Brighton School District 27J. As the council was informed by those representatives that Brighton School District 27J is in dire need of an increase in the mill levy as an override, and council indicated its desire to support that ballot measure, and that brings this resolution to the city council for consideration this evening.
And I assume, that doesn't make any difference, but the school district is School District 27J?
Right. It is not Brighton.
Not Brighton. Okay?
I think...
That we have the...
School District 27J.
Okay, any discussion by council? Mr. Benson?
Well, that was the issue I was going to raise. I thought we'd gotten away from referring to that school district as Brighton School District 27J.
I will administratively correct that resolution when it's sent forward, so it won't have that oversight in it.
I mean, unless we somehow think that by calling it Brighton School District 27J, we might encourage the people in Brighton to help us out on that.
That was not intentional to say that. So the correct name is just School District 27J.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Carson?
Oh, that was my issue also.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I'm prepared to make a motion, given those comments.
Okay, Mr., okay. If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Move to approve the resolution in support of the mill levy override measure for 27J.
Mr. Bullock, did you want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2011-53. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
I'll read the title as corrected then.
Okay.
"Resolution Expressing City Council Support for the Ballot Measure Increasing the Mill Levy in School District 27J."
Okay, I have had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, there's only one ordinance for first reading tonight. It's ordinance 1873, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 764 Regarding the Elected Officials' Retirement System in the City of Commerce City." Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 1873 by council as seated and approve the ordinance on first reading. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve ordinance 1873 on first reading.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Second.
I have had a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1873. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Carson?
I'm reading this over. I was under the impression, or I would like to be under it, that it would sunset November 1st. All those who were qualified as of November 1st, it would stay active, and come November 1st, there would be no more enrollment into this or gaining from this. That was my understanding, and that's not the way I'm reading this.
Mr. Gaylor?
Yeah. The ordinance as drafted, it makes the ordinance, as of the effective date of the ordinance, which would really be after second reading. Second reading would be...
October 24th.
October 24th, so it would really be effective then approximately November 1 after it's posted and so forth, but that date would probably be more like October 30th or October 31. Now, to clarify something, it also addresses those members on city council presently seated that, whose terms do not expire for another two years. So this ordinance as written would allow that city council member to receive the benefit of the additional years of service as far as the retirement benefits are concerned. With that exception to what you said, I point that out. So, shall I explain that further, or you...
No. Not to pick on people, but I do have an issue with that because it is making a benefit for one, when I can think of a couple other situations that Mr. Benson's setting to my right, if he gets reelected, then, under the way it used to read, then he'd have become qualified. If Sean Ford is elected as mayor, then we could have made the exception that he was already eligible, so he could continue. So I guess my point is, is that it makes it look, it is that we are just doing it to benefit one. I'm not sure that's a correct move. When you make something like this, it should be for all.
I've got three other people. Do we want to go through the other questions and see if we get those answered? Mr. Bullock?
The one person she's speaking about is me, and when we first brought this issue forward, the council people on council that opted out, opted out. I was elected until 2013. The one thing we did when we brought this forward was we would say it would not affect anybody presently serving on council. That included the mayor, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Teeter, and myself. Now, this is another case of just like what happened to me with United Airlines. When I got to the finish line, they took it and hid it. I don't see why I should opt out of my last two years when I'm the only one that's going to be affected by these, this ordinance. to be affected by these, this ordinance if it isn't going to affect Mr. Benson or Mr. Ford. Because when this ordinance goes into effect, it's going to go into effect before the election. And so what we specifically discussed when we were discussing bringing this forward was the people that were about to be elected, that had served before, that it could affect, and how this preempted them. It was never discussed that it would preempt anybody serving on council. Matter of fact, it was discussed that it wouldn't affect serving anybody, affect anybody serving on council. Now, if you want to preempt me out of my last two years, the only one, I'm going to object to this wholeheartedly. You know, and because I'm the only one this is going to affect, it's going to be to 2013, and it was a benefit that was a benefit. Now, if you're going to take this benefit away in midterm, what you're saying is, the people that you're saying it won't affect on council, it won't, except for you, Renee. And I don't think that's fair, because that is not how this was discussed last week. We discuss this as it not affecting anybody that is presently serving on council. It would go into effect with the new council that is being seated, that nobody else, this will sunset November 1st. And that is how we discussed it last week. You did not discuss me out of it. And I don't see why my last two years should be preempted.
Mr. McElDowney?
Actually, I have no comments.
Mr. Marino?
You know, this is a situation, I do understand both sides of this issue. Ms. Councilwoman Carson's concerns and then Mr. Bullock's concerns. When we originally had the discussion about this ordinance, we wanted to make sure that the commitment that we made to previously elected officials remained intact. The argument could be made that agreement, that commitment, was also made to Councilman Bullock, considering his previous years of service. This ordinance in no way will allow for further accrual after Mr. Bullock completes his, this term. Even if Mr. Bullock is reelected, he would not continue to add to his years of service that qualify for this retirement. It would just be to say that we are going to allow his last two years of service until his term expires in 2013 to qualify for his years of service in terms of this retirement fund. I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Ms. Carson?
Mr. Bullock, you're exactly correct. I think those are the exact words that we used. So because of that, and you jogging my memory, that's exactly how it was presented. You're probably right that... Anyway, I would take back everything that I said. As long as it sunsets here, and I guess you get two more years, and it never goes any further than that, then I don't have an issue.
That's exactly right. I run for reelection, and I would never accrue any more time.
And because I only listened to the meeting from last week, if Sean was elected, is his next, would not be included in any retirement? Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Bullock, you're okay? Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Carson, you're okay? Mr. Gaylor, you're okay?
I've got it clear in my mind, and that's why the ordinance is written, that Mr. Bullock would get credit for his last two years on this council.
Okay. Okay. Did I already ask if there's anybody in the audience? I don't remember if I did. If, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 1873 by council and approve it on first... I'm sorry?
You have the motion and the second.
I do already?
Yes.
Okay. City attorney needs to read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 764 Regarding The Elected Officials' Retirement System In The City Of Commerce City."
Okay, moved and seconded. City attorneys read the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Seven yeses. Ordinance passed on first reading. Now, moving into council business, the first item will be city council policy regarding expenditures for authorized events and travel. City attorney Bob Gaylor, begin the discussion.
This council policy, along with council policy number 19, dealing with discretionary funds, somewhat go hand in hand, because the council policy number five applies to travel and authorized expenditures for events that are attended by city council. Those items that are already accepted and recognized as events that qualify for city treatment. The discretionary fund policy, number 19, applies to use of the $1,500 discretionary funds per council member in addition to the travel policy funds. So I just want to make that clear. Now, in drafting the documents that you have in front of you for the packet this evening, what you have is a set of documents that I have redrafted based upon notes that I took at previous discussions that council had. And as you recall, you were not voting on each separate item. But the way I approached it was that if a council member made a comment and requested certain, whatever the item might be, in the council policy, and then, even though you didn't vote on it, but there wasn't an objection to it, I went ahead and put it in with the idea that you certainly weren't committed to it, but it certainly gave you a good starting point for further discussion, so that when it comes up for a vote, which it is not tonight, it's on for discussion, to make sure that we have these council policies in place, since they have been the subject of continued discussions, they'll be voted on at a subsequent council meeting. So tonight, I just wanted, and staff just wants to make sure, that we have the policy drafted as you want it to be drafted when it comes up for an actual vote. So when you look at council policy number five, which is the first one that's on the agenda for discussion, you notice in the policy statement on the very first page of the policy, which is page 106 of your packet, it specifically says that this policy is for attendance at authorized events and city-related business, except for, now I emphasize that, except for expenses payable from discretionary funds, which are authorized in council policy 19. I point that out just to reemphasize what I've just said. So the other point that I want to really emphasize is that in subparagraph A, where it talks about general guidelines, you'll see that it's for the conduct of business on behalf of the city to be paid by the city in providing, and in providing payment to council for expenses incurred for attendance at authorized events. And it goes on in subparagraph B, that unless otherwise approved by council, authorized events will mean those events budgeted in the city budget for attendance by members of the city council. So these events that we're talking about are those events that are allocated for expenditure by the city council from the legislative budget. So that's what we're talking about in this council policy number five. Again, distinguishing it from the discretionary funds, which is on a case-by-case basis for you. So it also provides, and this is not new, that if you have an expenditure on an event that's been authorized in the legislative budget of $350 or less, or no, excuse me, less than $350 authorized by the city manager, and then if you go in excess of $350, it shall be authorized by the city council. Now, that's what we had before in the travel policy, and I just want to make sure that's okay with you to leave it at that, remembering that we're only talking about events that you already are planned for under the city budget, legislative budget. So is that provision okay? Because once we get over that hurdle, then the rest of it pretty much falls into place.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. And I have several comments. I noticed that throughout here, you've replaced the word reimbursement with payment. And I don't know exactly what distinction you were trying to make there. Seems like it might be reimbursement or payment, just depending on whether it's incurred.
I used the word payment and changed it to payment because that's a more encompassing term, because when you talk about reimbursement, it means a situation where the city council member has incurred the expense, and now the city is reimbursing you for that expense. But there are situations where you can get in advance, so it's not a reimbursement, it's a payment. So you got those two scenarios for these activities. One is you can draw in advance, which would be then a reimbursement, I mean, a payment, or you can spend it yourself and then get reimbursed. That's why the change came about.
You know, I don't see anything on, is there anything in here about the per diems? Because I can tell you that these per diems, that's just like a gift. Every time we go to NLC or CML, we've got so many breakfasts, lunches, and dinners that we're treated to, I don't even know what a per diem would be used for. You know, if we have to go out and buy a meal, we can certainly account for that and turn it in. We have to take a cab someplace, we can account for that and turn it in. But why should we be getting, I don't know what the per diem is, 80 bucks a day or something like that? It's just a gift. It's a, I don't understand that, because we get fed very well at these events.
If you... Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you're getting fed a meal, then you shouldn't get a per diem for that. So you should be, if you do find that you received a per diem for a meal, then you should repay that or not spend it.
I would rather see it where if you had to buy a meal, which is rare, for me anyway, and it's only going to be about 15 bucks, no matter what, that you turn that in as an expense and get reimbursed for it, and not just, say, a flat-out $75 or $80 a day, which to me is just, it's just a gift to me. That's what it looks like. I never get the $300 advance, but I get those checks for the per diem, and I've kind of wondered about that in the past. Well, I'm not going to spend this amount of money, because the city's already paying for, and a lot of times there's a charge for a luncheon, or there's a charge for a dinner, although a lot of them are free from various people. But why, why do we need to have the per diem? I'd like to hear from the rest of the council about...
Mr. Benson, as an example, I agree with you. When I go on a trip, I don't take any per diem. I do take the $300 extra, because sometimes you'll sign up for a class that you didn't expect to sign up for. But I have never taken a per diem on any trip, and then at the end, when I hand in my travel, I will put in for the meals that I needed to purchase. It makes it a whole lot easier than having to give money back. Ms. Carson?
My understanding of the per diem is exactly what Mr. Flannery said. When we all stayed at the Embassy Suites and breakfast was included, then our per diem was minus the $20, because that's what breakfast was. And I think it's in those classes or something that you attend, maybe where you're getting lunch. I know if we all sign up for the speaker's lunch, that also is supposed to be subtracted out of that per diem. Anything that is already a meal that is being provided, because there's a certain amount of money, if I'm correct, that is breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And so if it's breakfast, it's worth X amount of dollars, lunch is worth X amount, and dinner's X amount. So if you have dinner being provided to you at one night, then you're to give the $35 back, or whatever that it is. It is, it's really not a gift, and I don't think anybody in the city should think that that per diem is a gift.
I'm just saying that we ought to do away with it, and if you have an expense for a dinner, or a lunch, or a breakfast, then you turn that in when you get back from the trip.
That would be up for a discussion.
I don't know why, it just seems like it's a double...
But I do have a question here on page 108, under 12. And I guess it was an explanation of the last part of the paragraph, where it's payment for costs incurred by spouse or companion of council member attending event. Why is it that it's only in the Denver area?
That is simply because I think past practice has been the spouse was not paid for on an out-of-town trip, and I just simply picked up that past practice. Those of you who have personal experience on that can correct me if I'm wrong. If you're in town, the spouse attending a meal with you or an event with you, that was part of the benefit of having a companion with you. But out of town, the expense was at your expense if the spouse attended, but that's certainly up for the way you want it.
The way that was is for, for instance, alternatives to family violence or Blue Stem, so that you could take your spouse with you at no cost to you, and he or she would be accompanied for you.
In town.
In town.
I guess the only thing I was thinking of is through attending the NLCs and those luncheons with the guest speaker. I've seen lots of spouses, not with Commerce City Council, but at other tables with lots of other council members. And I didn't know if that is a practice that's common with other cities and...
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the way Commerce City does that is that when the registration goes in for those events, you pay X, you, a council member, or me as an attendee pays for the spouse.
Okay.
Out of your own funds.
Okay.
And that's the way it's been working, and that's the way, actually, the way the registration is set up for CML.
I, like I said, I just thought it was kind of strange when I read that it was the Denver area only, so, okay.
Mr. McElDowney?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not through with my turn yet.
Mr. Benson?
No, that's okay. I just have some other comments and observations. Under A, the general guidelines, it says, "Council members are expected to participate to the greatest extent possible in that event to the benefit of the city." And I couldn't agree with that more. I mean, if we're going to go to two NLCs and CML every year on the city's nickel, we ought to be going to the workshops, we ought to be going to the mixers involving the people that we deal with, other cities, getting to know people from other cities, and enhancing the image of our city. But that, I think, that needs to be enforced, because we need to be going to these workshops, whether they might cost $100 for a half a day or whatever. That's what I'm going for, because for the NLCs, the workshops are on Saturday and Sunday, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're meeting with our lobbyists, and we're going around, meeting with our congressional delegation. That's the fun part of it, really. The workshops, you have to sit there and think and take notes and figure out how you're going to use this to benefit the city. But I would, I really agree with that, and I think maybe we could define that even more, that we're expected to go to all the workshops that we can, because paying an extra $100 for a workshop is really nothing compared to the total cost of the trip. It's a very small percentage of the total cost of the trip. Under B, unless... Under B, unless otherwise approved by council, authorized events shall mean those events budgeted in the city budget for attendance by members of the city council. What are those? Is it going to be the two NLCs and CML? And then anything above that's going to have to be either coming out of the discretionary fund or have approval of the council? Is that the way that that was intended? Because I'm presuming that we're going to keep the two NLCs and the CML.
In looking at the proposed 2012 budget, which is on for discussion tonight, the legislative budget, you'll note in there there are specific events budgeted that are above and beyond the NLC and the, and the CML. Includes committees that you belong to that are part of that program. Those are specifically budgeted, and that's why they're specifically called out in this, in this council policy, and you have to refer to the budget to determine what those are.
And that's sort of the way it's been for as long as I've been on the council. Those three events have always been included. Anything else goes to your discretionary fund or approval of the council. Okay. Also, in paragraph 12, where it says, "If you sign up for an event that's going to be paid for in advance by the city, and you don't show up and give the city enough time to fill that slot with somebody else without a reasonable cause, then it will be charged to the discretionary fund." I'd like to see that changed. It's going to be charged personally to the council member. Charged into the discretionary fund, that's still the city paying for it, and it'll be charged personally to the council member. That's just my two cents. And I will say right here, if I ever go on another trip for the city, I don't want a per diem anymore, so...
Is that all, Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Mr. McElhany?
Thank you. I think Mr. Benson raised some good points regarding the, I guess for lack of a better term, the hassle or the overhead of managing the per diem and the advance versus expenses. I've got to think that for the majority of the time, and I've traveled a lot of years for my day job, you simply log your expenses, you turn in an expense report upon completion of your trip, and you're reimbursed for those things that are reimbursable under the travel policy. To hand out cash or an advance of any sort for a per diem per se beforehand creates an opportunity for problems to develop where there may not otherwise be a problem. Honest mistakes or just the fact that time goes by and people don't close that out. So I would be in support of Mr. Benson's comments that say, unless there are extenuating or extreme circumstances, that we eliminate the concept of the per diem or the advance. And by that, I mean, we certainly could have individuals sitting on council that are not in a position to put travel or expenses incurred during travel on a personal card. Completely understand that. And I think I would just suggest that the policy account for that exception, but that by and large, the rule be you log your receipts, you submit a travel and expense report upon return, and in that same line of thinking, I don't know why we would allow 90 days to elapse upon completion of travel before we submit expenses for review and approval. I mean, for two reasons, frankly. If I'm on the hook personally for that travel, I'm going to want to submit that expense report immediately upon return and get that reimbursement secured. Second, to leave those expenses open, if they were in fact a city-paid function, is an accounting challenge. So why we would have to allow 90 days for those to be submitted, I don't necessarily get. I mean, I can understand plus or minus five days outside of the 30, but it's not like we're traveling every week and you're trying to amass expense reports for this month's activity per se. I mean, these are, there's just not that much going on travel-wise. So I guess in summary, essentially eliminate per diem/advance except in extenuating circumstances, decrease repayment or filing window, if you will, from 90 days to 30 days. And what was my other note here? Oh, I think Mr. Benson touched on another point that I think is important to potentially reinforce in the policy, and that does relate to council's duty to be essentially on the job when you're on the city dime. So, for example, if we're at NLC or any event for that matter, and the hours of that event are effectively eight to five, let's say, then we should be making no plans during that timeframe that are not city business, so I shouldn't make a sightseeing trip during the middle of the day and expect that that's okay. I'm on that trip for city business, and I think it's critical that that be spelled out in black and white terms, so that in the event someone chooses to make that poor choice, their peers on council have quick grounds to refer to a policy that says that's not kosher, having seen that occurred in the past. I think otherwise, the policy is getting very close to where it needs to be. So thank you very much for the work on this, Bob.
Mr. Moreno?
A couple of items on this. I agree with Councilman McElhany on the 30-day payment requirement. That's what's in the discretionary policy now. We should also have that applied to the travel policy. On paragraph E, I would expect that the 30-day requirement that we're not, that we're now proposing instead of 90 days would also include mileage. Is that correct?
Yes. That's in 10, any expense.
Good. And then the other thing that I'll mention is, you know, these rules aren't, aren't coming from nowhere, that these are real experiences that have happened in the past where people haven't always followed these, these guidelines. So this is why this activity, this procedure is necessary. I'll also support Mr. Benson on his advocacy that if we don't show up to an event, it comes out of that person's personal pocket. There's, I think, a significant lack of accountability in some cases on this council, where we just RSVP to any event and we do not show up. That coming out of the discretionary fund, to me, is not a severe enough punishment to curb that behavior. It has to be more than that. So I would support it being billed, that activity that that council member missed, barring any emergency or family emergency, that that be billed to the individual council member. The only thing that, the other thing that I will say that I'm slightly uncomfortable with is actually paying for spouses to go to some events, and I am completely biased because I am single and I don't, maybe I don't get it, but I do feel a little uncomfortable with that, and I just want to get that out there. But that's, that's all I have.
And just, everybody's still out there, and I just want to raise that one. As an example, I will start my day at 7:30 in the morning, and I won't finish until after the last event. The only time I get to see my wife is to go to some of these events, and if I look at it as if I can spend that little bit of city's money to take her to one of these events, it not only helps me, but helps my marriage. And we have not had a challenge with council members taking a significant other. So it was the same thing, and, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I'm telling you, I don't, I don't agree with some of the council members who think this is a part-time job that they only do on Monday nights. I know I'm putting in 35 to 50 hours every single week, and if somebody doesn't believe it, feel free to come with me for my last four weeks. And I'm telling you, my wife would have left me long before now had I not been taking her to some of these events. And some of them are very expensive. They'll cost me $50 for a ticket. They're not political things, they're not, you know, they're strictly things that the city, that I go as representative as the mayor. So I understand what you're saying, and, and for me, it really doesn't make any difference because I only have four weeks left and all of my events are already paid for at this point, but I understand what you're saying, but also look at the other side of it that says, for those of us who actually do things past Monday night, it, it's a big deal. You know, I mean, it's a big deal when you're not home, starting early in the morning, and you're not home till late at night. So that little bit that the city does give towards a significant other sure saves a lot of marriage and a lot of time for the council. Mr. Bullock, you're next.
Adding on to what the mayor just said, not only council, but staff also.
Oh, yes.
That staff benefits from being able to bring their significant other to events because there are times when staff will be here from 7 o'clock in the morning to well after we've gone home, and they only see their significant other at an event that they may go to and sit. And so I, this is one of the things that I feel that it isn't even a benefit, it's, it's unnecessary, because that might be the only time during the day that you actually see your significant other, and you might hear things you don't want to hear, but if you're at a dinner, you can really squash it real quick. So that works sometimes too. Now, mine's going to take even a little bit longer than Mr. Benson's, because I'm going to go back to come forward. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Gaylor that members of council that are on a steering committee should have their travel already in the legislative budget, and it should be there. So if Mr. Moreno is on the Human Development Committee, aren't you? Is that correct? And he's a steering committee member. He knows he has two NLCs, and he knows he has two meetings during the year to go to for that steering committee. I'm on the LTC. I know I have two NLCs and two meetings during the year to go to, and CML is just the only other thing that would be in that legislative budget. Any other thing above and beyond that, I would have to ask council approval or ask for it to come out of my discretionary fund. Now, in the past, you know, what I want to say is, I think that everybody on council should achieve a bronze in their leadership qualities with the NLC. A bronze is 16 credit hours. That means that you've gone to just the minimum number of classes that gets you through, and especially with new city councilmen, it is really a basic, basic training class. Some of the classes in the past that have been bronze classes, and I'm going to tell you the notable ones, hiring and evaluating the CEO, what councils and managers need to know. That is a, for a new council member, that is a must. Effective government, governance, secrets of evaluating your city manager, balanced governance and representation on city council. This tells the difference between a governance board and a representative board, because a lot of people get on council and think they're strictly a governance board, and we're not. We are actually stewards and trustees of this city and the finances on it. Mentoring. Every new councilman that comes on city council is mentored whether they want to be or not. They, sometimes they don't even know it, but every experienced council member should mentor any new city council member. Stress management, how to tackle stress before it tramples you. A lot of us have not taken that class, and guess what? You were trampled in the process. There are days that you sit on this board and you feel like that if another person says something, you're absolutely going to scream. Building a better relationship with management and staff to create a stronger community. That is a must with all city councilmen, and it should be one of the first classes you take, along with the class on city managers, because it hasn't happened on our city council with this city manager, but I saw it happen before with the first city manager I was with. He was running the city instead of the city council, and they let him. And if you learn how to manage yourself, then you learn how to manage the city manager, and you know what the separation is between you and your city manager. And so those classes, everyone I just named, would get you up to 16 credit hours and a bronze certificate. If you didn't want to go for your silver, gold, diamond, or platinum, that's well and good, but at least you know you have a good basis. And every council member should have that strength basis with which to start your leadership off with. In CML, they give two or three classes on governance, on city manager. Where, matter of fact, me and Jerry and Tom sat in a class that was so good that we didn't even want to leave after it was over, because the lady, she strictly put it on the dime, who does this and who does that, and if you're getting over into their business, get out. And it really defined your areas of separation. So being that we know that some items are going to be in the budget, and being that we know that in the fall, we go to the Congress of Cities, in the winter or the spring, we go to the Congressional City Conference. The Congressional City Conference is basically classes, then lobbying. You go to your, all your representatives and senators, and you try to get different projects that you would like to see in your city pushed through or even put on their radar, so they at least, if they hear it coming up, they know that CDVG grant, that when it was going to be cut, every city councilman around the country was in every one of their representative's and senator's office saying, "Do not cut CDVG. It is a, it works for our cities, and if you cut that out, what do we have left?" You know, there are times when we overlook the forest for the trees, and we're so busy looking at what we can do to save money, we aren't looking at what we can do to use our money effectively. I believe that travel is an effective means for most councils. I'm not going to compare us with any other city, because there's cities that can't afford us, and there are cities that can afford to do more than us. I'm also not going to compare myself with my neighbor. If he goes out and buys a new car, it isn't my job to go out and get a new car too, so I keep up with them. Our job is to govern Commerce City, and that's our only job. We aren't going to worry about what Thornton, Westminster, or Northland does, we're going to worry about how well Commerce City does. And we have some items in Commerce City that's called a refinery that is the biggest help to us, but can sometimes be the greatest hindrance to us too, because there's a lot of times that people say that that refinery is nothing but stinky, that's what we hear about it. But I, I'm not going to say this, but I said before that that's the smell of money, but you didn't hear it here. Our legislative budget should include two NLCs for every city councilman.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Just, I think we're getting a little off track, and I don't want to cut you off, but I'm not sure that, that the classes that we need in some of those, if you could kind of bring us back on track to where we were as far as working on this particular policy. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, well, as far as travels and expenses, I think the function of this council is to regularly attend year-to-year the different things that we budgeted for, and when you go, when you sign up for them, you become available and make yourself there. If you're not going to be able to make it, let staff know ahead of time so they can fill the table with somebody from staff. And...
And if you don't?
We pay for it out of our own pocket. It does not come out of discretionary funds, because if we are the ones that are not doing it, we should be penalized for it. Per diem. Per diem is not a gift. It is a federally legislated item that says for every city you go to, you get a certain amount of money for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. If you don't use that money or you aren't going to be attending breakfast and lunches, then you, you turn that money back in. But per diem is not a gift, and I, if you're one of the people to say, "Don't give me a per diem check," I agree with that, but don't make policy for the whole council. Let the individual council members decide whether they want per diem themselves. Let the individual councilmembers decide whether they want per diem themselves. Because per diem is something that is given to you before a trip if you want it. If you don't want it, you don't have to take it, and you can bring receipts back afterwards. So, I would like that to be decided among the councilpeople themselves, not for somebody to say just because they think it's a gift, or they can travel cheaper that don't give per diem checks out. I will stop.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Thinking about the, the definition of per diem, and, you know, I've been traveling for business purposes probably for 46 years, you know, before Mr. Moreno's parents were born, probably. And the definition, as I understand it, of per diem is that you're getting a certain amount of money. You're not going to exceed it. You don't have to account for it. Now, if there are people on the council, and I think it would be entirely appropriate, if somebody needs a $300 advance, a $500 advance, whatever, to get them through this, this trip for a conference, then that is something, you know, you get this money, then you have to account for it when you get back. But that's not what a per diem is. The definition of per diem is that you don't have to account for it. You don't turn it back in. It's just a, an amount in lieu of you're having to account for your dinners and lunches and breakfasts and things like that. So, I would like to, but like I said, I don't, I don't want a per diem anymore. I hope that we can eliminate that, that policy, that idea, and if somebody needs an advance, then fine, give them the advance that they need and let them account for it once they return from that trip. But the per diem concept does not fit here, especially in a situation where we're treated to so many lunches and dinners, or the city is already paying for that lunch or dinner because it's a special general session lunch at CML or NLC. There, there's lunches that aren't included in the registration fee. Some of them are, but there are extra charges for certain lunches and dinners, and I think the city should pay for those, but certainly not give a per diem in addition to that. And that, I don't think that that has been made clear at all. It never was made clear to me in, in the first part. I just thought, this is what I have to spend. If I don't, if I go over it, then it's, it's my money. If I go under it, it's my money. That's what a per diem is. It's not an advance. It's a per diem, and that's how those things, those two things are distinguished. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Carson?
You could make an argument on both sides of a per diem, I think. I actually would hate to see the per diem go away for many reasons. For one, when you get a per diem, you have an actual amount of money that you're told, this is all you're reimbursed for. That's it. We don't sit around and come up with policy of what we're going to pay for breakfast, what we're going to pay for lunch, what we'll pay for dinner. Your tipping, everything is included in that per diem, if it's my understanding is correct. Anything that was prepaid for the city, as far as food, meals, should come out of the per diem. If the councilmember received a full allotment, then the councilmember, and then, Mr. Benson, you're probably correct that nobody really understood maybe the policy, but, but that if you've had prepaid meals, those, that money is to be returned. And I think it, it frees up a lot of, if you're going out to eat, what is it I'm allowed to spend? What receipt am I allowed to turn in? This way, if you want to have a $60 dinner and you don't want to eat breakfast in order to afford the $60 dinner, well, it's, it's there. So, the other argument I would have for a per diem is, I don't want to get into anybody's personal finances, but you could have people that sit on council that cannot go out and upfront that money, may not have a credit card in order to do it with, may not have the cash allotted to them, and I would not want to cause any humiliation to anybody in that, in that manner. This way, if they travel, they have an amount of money they know that they can spend, and as long as they stay within that, then it didn't come out of their pocket at all. Somebody who does expenses all the times turns them in for work. If you're not going to do a per diem and you're going to do a total expense thing, then I think you have to have a very detailed expense. What it is that we pay for, what that receipt has to look like, what, it's got to have a name, an address, it's got to have items listed. Anytime I turn things like that in for work, they have to be very detailed. They're very cumbersome. I probably am lazy and probably miss a quarter of my reimbursements. But it, you've got to come up with exactly then what it is. You're going to reimburse how much for breakfast, lunch, dinner. You can't go over that. And I think we're going to put a lot of work on the city manager's office, doing all those receipts and this and that. So, policing yourself as an adult with a per diem. If you've already prepaid for a, a breakfast, if you stay at the Embassy Suites and it comes with breakfast, and it wasn't deducted, take it upon yourself to give that back. And as the mayor, speaking of spouses, I think that we don't do enough for spouses. When we all set up here and decided whether we were going to run, and we asked our spouse, "What do you think about it?", I don't think the spouse fully understood, because I don't think we fully understood. We have people that sit up here with very young families, so I know that that spouse, and, and staff with very young families, that that spouse is taking on a lot of extra duty and so that we can go out and be good stewards of the city. We also want those spouses to be somebody who speaks and is educated in the city and feels like they are part of what is happening here. Not that they're always excluded. I don't think that it's ever been an issue of taking them to a dinner here or there a couple of times a year or whatever, and I would hate to see that. I would think that spouses would, for the most part, fully appreciate that they were allowed to be part of something, get to know the people that we all hang out with every single Monday night, and because it's, as a spouse of a councilperson or spouse of staff, I can guarantee you, they're being asked questions in this city. And you want them to also be able to answer those knowledgeable. So, so no, I think we should continue doing something for the spouses. And like I said, I would hate to see the per diem go away. And the 30-day, I would like to come to a middle ground there, take the 90 away, but, but give it 60 days. And that way, if somebody hasn't turned it in, they can get a reminder that it needs to be turned in and get it turned in on time, so.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
I'll try and be quick. We've had a lot of discussion on a relatively simple topic. Again, this is a policy around how we handle our travel and expense dollars. So, in summary, my thoughts are 30 days. If you can't fill out a piece of paper in 30 days, then you don't have any business sitting on this dais, whether it's mileage or travel and expense. It is an undue burden for staff to have to manage us. We need to manage ourselves. So, 30 days, fill it out, close out the month, make it a practice. The concept of per diem, I think we're mixing concepts here. I think we need to define a per day allocation that is made up of a framework of breakfast, lunch, dinner, but that is an expensed item so that you are, again, collecting and turning in receipts. If we can't be transparent in our expenditures in that regard, then we have no business spending money on the city's behalf. Why we would spend dollars that don't, aren't held to account doesn't make sense to me. Any business that you work for, that I've ever been privy to, you collect your receipts, you turn them in. And some receipts look one way and some receipts look another, but you collect them in your wallet, you put them in your laptop bag, you put them in an envelope, you get home, or you're sitting at the airport, you put your expense report together, you tape your receipts to a piece of paper, you make a copy of them, you keep that, you send the originals in, and that's your process. It's that simple. And again, it doesn't take 45 days to put that together. I think, again, the comment suggested originally by Mr. Benson, personal accountability when we choose not to participate in an event that we have committed to makes great sense. I think inclusion of spouses at the local level, not only for the reasons that have been mentioned up here, but I think we should all be more honest than we have been in that regard. Our spouses are oftentimes our best wingman, so, or woman, whoever it might be. And I think it's amazing the, the connections oftentimes that our spouses have to those people that we do business with as a councilmember that we didn't realize, and it's a great, they are a great asset to the community. So, I have no issue with spouses at local events on the city dime. And I think the other pieces are more in line with the upcoming legislative budget, so I'll hold those until that time.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Couple of items. Mr. Benson, the funny thing about your comment was that my dad is actually older than you are. So, you know, I could, I could actually be your son, as scary as I thought that that may be. The other, the other item, that, I, I still do feel a little uncomfortable, but I feel much better after hearing from the married members of this council. And so, I, I don't have an issue if we choose to, if you, if anyone chooses to bring the spouse with them. I don't think, I, I think exactly as Councilwoman Carson said, we don't do enough for them because you are home, oh, you're away from home so often, and it's a very different experience coming home to an empty house versus coming home to a spouse who's been waiting up for you, or a family who misses the bedtime stories or anything while you're gone. So, appreciate your spouses and what they do for you guys. And actually, I think that's, the per diem issue, I don't have a problem with per diem. Let's be grownups. Let's come back. Let's pay back. Anything that we, was covered for us, maybe by another agency or by the actual convention that we didn't pay for, for ourselves, that's been the practice that I've had all along, coming back, sitting down, saying, "I didn't pay for this, I didn't pay for this, here's my reimbursement check to the city." That's what an adult should do. Let's just continue to do that practice. If anything, maybe have staff schedule appointments with us to check in a couple of days or a week after travel and just say, you know, "Need your receipts. Would like to go over your, your expense form," and make sure that everything is kosher. So, that's the only, I think per diem is fine, and that's the only comment I have.
Mr. Bullock?
I'm just going to repeat what Mr. Moreno just said, almost word for word, except the part about his dad and Mr. Benson. I think that is the same thing on per diem. Per diem is a, one of the things that they give you for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. If you don't go to one of the events that you're scheduled for, and you meet with somebody else and you go out to lunch, bring those receipts back and show that you didn't, that you spent money on something the city paid for. But, because there's a lot of times you will meet people there and they say, "I need to talk to you about this. Let's go to lunch," or "Let's go to dinner." And you might just skip an event, a luncheon or something, that's a rubber chicken to go someplace else. But will you come back and you become accountable? And that's just what Mr. Moreno said. Be accountable and be an adult.
I want to play off of something, Mr. Mackel Downey, because I'm not sure anybody picked up on that particular point. Per diem is per meal. Certain amount for dinner, certain amount for lunch, certain amount for breakfast. I, I'm sorry?
And gratuities.
And gratuities, whatever. I have a challenge with not eating breakfast and lunch and then spending $60 for dinner. I don't think that's how it was meant. You know, if you go out and spend $60 for dinner and they allow you 25, well, the rest of it should be on you. So, I'm, I'm not in, I would like to see per diem be those meals. You're allowed up to this amount. Mr. Flannery, are you going to make a statement?
Mr. Mayor, you know, and council, I think several of you have said it, but adult was mentioned, policing yourself was mentioned. I mean, it's really a system that is, you're, you're on city business, and so this is a way of offsetting those impacts to you on a personal level. And I think when you get into detail of how you enforce something, how you write, well, that's, that's up to you all to do that. But I would say on, on, on the staff side, as well as meeting with you a week or a day or two after you come back, that we would look at upfront, looking at what that check is going to look like. If we know, if we see on the agenda that you're going to ex-speaker, no, um, um--
Eatership Lunch.
Yeah, luncheon, you know, or, or the keynote speaker or whatever, that, that, that's one thing that you're going to, then we would take that luncheon, wouldn't put it in the check that we cut. I think we would do that unless the council wants to do it a different way. We would, we would really go through the agenda with you or prior to and say, "Okay, you're not going to be there until midday Wednesday, so you don't have to have breakfast" or whatever. So, we would actually do a better job on our side of doing that as well.
Okay. Ms. Dr. Mackel Downey?
I'm, I'm just going to say this again because I'm, I'm frankly embarrassed to be part of a discussion where we're asking for staff to hold our hand in compiling an expense report, effectively helping us figure out how much we've spent or how much we need to write back. If we are not capable, as a sitting member of this city council, to take a trip and hold on to a receipt and know that we have a certain amount of money to spend on that day, or we're only going to be there for a half a day, so we reduce our daily allotment by that amount, then I don't know why you're sitting on council and dealing with a, a city budget. I mean, I don't know any sharper or finer way to say it. It's, it shouldn't be up to staff to place a follow-up call to remind us to fill out an expense report. My take is this, with the exception, again, of a councilmember who's not in a personal position to do so, take the trip, cover the costs within the guidelines that we outline, submit your expense report within 30 days. If you don't submit it within 30 days, or plus or minus of that, it, it's your dollars, you're out. Nobody from the city should be there to pick up after you. Nobody from the city should be there to help you do the math. I, I mean, seriously? If I require somebody to call me and tell me that it's time to submit my expense report, I shouldn't expect my, submit my expense report, right? I mean, that's my, that's my error. I, I don't know, I, I just completely at a loss for those, those concepts, but I, I've made my point.
Mr. Gaylor, I know that there were a number of things added to this. Do you feel comfortable with the items that you have? Are there questions that you want to?
I do. I'd just like to tell the council what I understand, what you want--
Okay.
--the changes to be, and then, then let's have a--
Let's do that.
--consensus as to what you want here.
Okay.
Okay, you ready?
Ready.
Okay. First item that I've got is on, under D. By the way, I didn't change what was mentioned above about attending, members are expected to participate to the greatest extent possible in attending these meetings because, picking up what Councilman Mackel Downey said, it's almost impossible for anybody to try and enforce that provision. This is a, some verbiage in this policy that tells you what your responsibilities are, and you need to, need to follow that responsibility, and if you can't, then you shouldn't go next time, basically. But that, I don't know how else you can say it any better, so I left that. First one I changed then is under D, Advanced Payments. What I've got here, it says, "Advanced payment for travel expenses for previously approved trips shall not be paid except for extenuating circumstances approved and advanced by the city manager. The request for travel advances shall be made to the city manager's office at least one week prior to taking the trip."
Anybody have a challenge with that? Seeing none, go on to the next.
Is this a per diem?
No. That's an advance--
That's an advanced payment. Okay. The next one I have is at the top of page 107, which is dealing with the filing of the claim, and there was mentioned, it started out at 90 days, but then it was mentioned 30 days. Also, was mentioned by one member, well, one councilmember, is 45 days, but I heard from a couple of you, 30 days, so I've got it written 30 days.
Okay. Problem with 30 days? And again, that's 30 days from when you're back, not 30 days for the whole month.
Well, let me ask you a question. If it's not turned in, then do they just forfeit?
What's the penalty, or is there one?
You, to qualify for payment, you got to turn it in. So, if you don't turn it in, within this timeframe, you lose it.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
So, are there exceptions that would be made if you were immediately whisked away and didn't take your expenses with you? You were in an accident? I don't know.
Extenuating circumstances would take--
Extenuating circumstances would take care of themselves.
If it was incurred in form for...
Mr. McElDowney?
I was just going to say the same thing. I mean, I think the key is, you put a 30-day target on it. I mean, if you set a 90-day target, you're going to have people turning them in 100 days, 110 days later.
360 days.
And by having that 30-day marker on it, whether it's for mileage or otherwise, it forces us to clear our business and move ahead, as opposed to keeping it out there, staff having to know that, "Oh, I haven't seen expenses," and all of a sudden, there's a huge flurry of submissions. I, I think the one thing that we consistently, as a council, fail to account for as we think about policy or otherwise, is the people outside of us in that equation, right? We have a discussion about us, but we don't necessarily think about the people that are back here at base, doing the work to put the, keep the city moving. And so every little thing that's a variable that we introduce adds a ripple to their efficiency, and so...
So the question is, you want to say, "Except for extenuating circumstances," then you got to say, "Well, who determines extenuating circumstances? It's city manager?"
City manager.
Yeah, that'll work.
Do you want to say that?
And, and that's a private issue, too, because if they have extenuating circumstances and they go to the city manager, he can let staff know why this isn't being done, and it's between those three people.
Okay, got it. Okay, that, by the way, receipts are required for any expense, including mileage.
Including mileage.
I added mileage because there was some question whether that was included, so it was intended to be included, so is that okay?
Well, actually, a question of, a point of clarification on mileage. Mileage is something that you need to typically log, destination A to destination B, mileage, destination B, destination C, mileage. But my car doesn't print out a receipt for that mileage.
Mine does need...
I typically, I do get a receipt if I pay, pay for gas. I don't make a practice of asking...
No, you just file your log as part of that.
Right, I file a log. I list destination, mileage. If I have multiple legs in that day, I, I literally log those individual legs and submit a total for the day. I, I don't know that we, as a, a council, have a practice or custom of submitting that log. It's been a personal practice of mine, but I guess the point is, I don't know how you get a receipt for mileage, other than to list your destinations and distances traveled.
Well, it says a claim for payments.
Well, it says a claim for payments. Receipt could be something else. Every time I do a mileage, I give them a copy of this, which is similar to what you do, so it matches where I went and how many miles it was, and I consider that the receipt.
Just so we're clear on the term, because I don't know that receipt would translate for that way, and for me, in that way.
On my mileage, if I go from here to the airport and get on a plane, it shows a plane ticket of me on that day, and it shows when I came back, and home and to the airport and airport to home is the only mileage you get to claim. If you make side trips, you don't get to claim that mileage. So if you show that you went on a trip and you parked at the Canopy Garage, you have a receipt for Canopy Garage. So you know you went from your house to Canopy Garage at a certain time, you have a receipt from coming back at a certain time, that would constitute the mileage from my house to Canopy Garage.
Yeah, I'll add, a, a mileage log constitutes a receipt for mileage. Good?
That'll work.
Okay, moving on, a number nine, under meals.
Well, can I, can I add something to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Benson.
Say your mileage, we have 30 days, so your mileage for like the month of Jan, January would be due 30 days after January 31st. Is that the way I'm interpreting that?
Hmm, I, I, 30 days after the mileage was incurred is what I...
Well, that would mean we'd have to turn something in every day. If that's what's going to be, if that's what's going to be necessary, I guess we can do that. But it seems like if you do it by the month, and you have 30 days, then it's 30 days from the end of the month to which it applies.
Mr. Flannery, can you make a comment? Mr. McElDowney, if you can help with that?
Our expense sheets are weekly. They cover a seven-day window. So the month doesn't have to be first of month to 31st of month. I mean, you can do a rolling, it's, as I get an expense, I mean, you could hold on to a few of them, I guess, but in, in my mind, it's, you complete a week, you do your expense report. You complete a week, you do your expense report. You could grab a few of them and submit them, but I think the key is to get, as we said, get them submitted within 30 days of the occurrence.
That, that is not what we talked about about a month and a half ago. We said quarterly, that you turn in those expenses quarterly, and this was brought up because of someone that turned in mileage for a year back, and we said that every quarter, if you don't turn it in for the quarter, don't turn it in, because you aren't going to get paid for previous quarters. And that was the consensus on this council, and I think that meeting was approximately a month ago, because I remember the discussion with a council member that turned in a year-old expense report.
Would you want to go more than 30 days then to address this?
Um, yeah, I've actually got everybody here. Mr. Benson, is that working for you yet?
Yes, I think I've said everything that I need to say.
Okay. Ms...
Ms. Carson. Okay, Ms. Carson.
Mr. Flannery, I, I would like to get some insight from you, since it's your office that's going to be doing this. I'm envisioning that now, if we're turning receipts in every week, probably nobody travels like the mayor does. And so I would assume that almost every single day of the week, he's got a mileage that he could turn in. So does that mean that that council person then is going to expect that I've turned my receipt in, and now I want a, a check in a week? Because if, if you're going to, it's just craziness, I think, is what this all is. It's, I think we're going to put a hardship on your office.
I think, you know, when, monthly is, is a good, is a good timeframe, because when you have expenses that you incur, if you submit them monthly, I don't think you are all traveling every day. Even, I think, the mayor would probably turn his in, probably not even daily.
So if we say at the end of the month, turn all your expenses in, does that work?
I think the 30-day timeframe is, is good for submitting your monthly expenses. I think in past jurisdictions I've worked, you know, to and from the council meetings, council at the end of the month would turn in their expenses or their mileage for those meetings, and then any other meetings they had. And so every month, staff would look at that and then, and reimburse them accordingly.
I hate to be the, the example person again, but the way that I do my mileage is, every week, I'm filling it out. And on the first of whatever the next month is, I'm handing in all four weeks, which still is within the 30 days, but I don't hand them in every, but I'm doing them every week. Every day that I have it, it's in mine, because I've got mine on the computer, it does all the multiplication, all the addition, everything for me. So it's cake. All I have to put in is the mileage.
I do think that what we would need to do, and we already have some drafted, are, are some forms that actually meet some of the intent of the discussion that you're having. This helps clarify some of those forms. But mileage forms a packet, you know, for, for the council to actually make copies of. If they need some more, we can always give them. But it's, it's a tracking sheet of mileage and those types of things and trips.
And the one that I've got, and I've given it, I think, to everybody so far, and also to staff, it, you can do it on your computer and just plug in the numbers, and it does all your multiplication for you, so nobody even has to do that. Mr. Moreno, did I cancel you just now? Did you, you didn't have anything in there? Okay, Mr. Bullock, Ms. Carson, and then Mr. Benson. You already got yours? Mr. Bullock, did you already get yours?
Yes, I just interrupted.
Okay. Mr. Benson, did I get yours?
No, I'm still, is it going to be, we do this on a monthly basis, and when, like for January, when is that expense report due? January 31st, February the 1st? Is it due the end of February? I'm just unclear about how soon after the end of the month those have to be turned in.
The way that I read it was, it's 30 days after you're done with whatever it is you did. So if you went away for a week, it would be done 30 days from when you return.
It, it seems to me that we're kind of mixing apples and oranges. When we're talking about your daily expenses going to a daily trip, to me, that's a mileage reimbursement that you probably would want to submit at the end of each month, just to say, "Here's a nice, clean timeframe, September 30th, here's my mileage report." If you're having extenuating travel on other things, then I think what I've heard the council say is, within 30 days, submit that package of receipts or, or whatever. So mixing the two is more difficult, because by the absolute value of that law or policy, when you took a trip to downtown, you would have to submit that within 30 days. So I don't, I don't, I don't think we want to mix those two. I think if we do mileage, once a month is good. I think a special trip or a scheduled trip at once in, once 30 days.
But if it's mileage once a month, like for the month of January, when would the January report be due? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think if you, if, I would say if you, if you have travel in, in January in your vehicle, I would recommend you submit it at, at the month interval. If you have a special trip to DC, then you submit that within 30 days.
Well, that's a separate...
But that's, but if you want to submit it within 30 days, there's, I don't think anybody's going to be upset with that either.
But I'm still not, for the month of January, is it going to be due on January 31st, or February the 1st, or February 28th? When is it going to be due?
By the rule that you established tonight, it would be due 30, 30 days, within that 30 days.
Within the preceding 30 days of the travel month, you have to turn it in for the last month. So if you travel in January, sometime in February, you get that travel voucher in for your mileage, and then they will pay you for it. If you can get it in by the 15th, it's the 15th. If it takes you to the 28th because you're busy, the 28th, but I, I mean...
That, that's what I'm trying to establish, Mr. Bullock. Is it the 15th, or the 28th, or the 1st, or what?
Just get it in within the next prior month sometime, so then, when you come up with February, you get it in within the prior month of March.
So it's 30 days after the end of the month to which the mileage applies?
No more than 30 days. No more than 30 days.
Okay, that's, that's the question I've been asking for the last 15 minutes, but if that's, if that's clear, that's fine.
If I may, we're, we're now into a procedural discussion, whereas we should be having a policy discussion, so let's keep it to policy.
Okay. Mr. Gaylor, the next item, or is that the last one?
The next one is paragraph nine on meals. I've got added, if, this has to do with per diem, and I'm leaving in the per diem. It's limited to federal guidelines, and it includes gratuities. And if any meal is paid for by others, per diem paid to the council member for such meal shall be reimbursed by the council member to the city.
Good.
Then I've added, gratuities shall be paid in a reasonable amount, not to exceed 20% because there's been some issue about even higher gratuities paid. Is that good?
That's good.
Mr. McElDowney?
Mr. Gaylor, I have a comment, I'm sorry. To Mr., to Mr. Flannery and your staff, I mean, the overhead of handing out a full check, and this goes, I guess, to your staff in, in a broader sense, to Mr. Tinklinberg's staff as well, because there's a finance role here. The process of calculating a check, handing out a check, and then expecting a council member to give back the unused portion, I'd like to understand the overhead your team encounters as a result versus a process where an individual is to log their own expenditures and submit those at the close of a trip.
To be completely honest, submitting the receipts is actually more work than a per diem. I think per diem is an easy solution. I think, I think what makes it more successful is the collaborative effort between the city staff and the council member to make sure that what they're getting per diem for is what they're expending it for, and that if there is a, a meal purchased by whoever, whatever skipped, that, that, that be paid back to the city. I think with, with specific receipts, now, I've had jurisdiction where, where we had a per diem, and we still tracked every receipt that we spent per diem on for the very reason that we were showing the accountability on that. And so somebody in finance would check that. And at the end of that trip, if you got $300 and you spent 250, then you better have 50 bucks to give back to the city. If you show that your amount was higher, then you might get something back. The tracking of individual receipts is more time and, and more overhead, but, I mean, it, it's, it's not insurmountable. It's, it's, you don't travel as, as a council that often, and many of you are very studious about how you track your, track your stuff, track your travel. So I think, you know, I don't think it's as, as big of a, an issue, there are, there are certain instances where there are problems. But I think part of it is education from our standpoint to make sure that you are all aware of it. You know, when the new council comes on, we have an orientation packet that we give them, saying, "Here's what's going on," and these policies are really good to, to that end. But I think it's, it's, it's not something that we can't, we can't do. It's, it's something we can do, and it's not that complicated.
Thank you.
Hey, the way, the way this is drafted right now is that it says that any meal paid for by others is not getting involved with, is your meal more than the per diem or less than the per diem? I mean, that gets to be, I would think, a nightmare. But it says if it's paid for by others, per diem will be paid by the council member for such meal, reimbursed to the city.
Okay.
Okay, going on.
I need to ask, can you explain that one more time?
Okay, so you get per diem, and if you're attending a meal where it was paid for by another entity or by others, then you reimburse the per diem per etat for that, for that meal.
If you went to NLC and went to the keynote speaker and they say that lunch was $50...
And the city paid for it.
The city paid for it. So would they, they would just subtract your per diem, what the lunch per diem will be at?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we talked about mileage shall be paid based upon federal guidelines, using a mileage log as proof of mileage.
Good.
And then also, Mr. Flannery and I was discussing this item, on gratuities shall not be authorized in excess of, as an example, $5 per day for lodging, or 20% for a taxi fare. Because there have been instances where there needed to be something said about that. You like that, or this is totally new? You didn't discuss it?
I'd like to be the maid in your room if you're giving them five bucks a day.
Well, when they say $5 a day for lodging, isn't that like bellhops, lodging, everything that's...
No, that's the maid.
Just the maid.
Making your bed, cleaning the room, so forth.
$5 a day? It's usually just $2 a day.
Okay, I'm glad you told me that. I'm going to cut more. Okay. $2 per day?
Yeah.
$2 per day is usually what you give a maid for her service.
I'm learning something here. Okay, thank you, guys.
You're a big tipper.
I think I would like to do the five, but you can call the three out.
Okay, I got $2. Then I got payment for costs incurred by a spouse or companion. I think there was pretty much consensus on that one, leaving that in. Then on, on page three of the policy, page 108, I changed the, the penalty for not attending a, a meal that the city paid for. The costs will be charged personally to the absent council member instead of to the discretionary fund.
So I have a question with that. So then, is that going to be deducted out of your council payment that you receive every month? Is that how we're going to do that?
That would, that would probably be the logical way of doing it. That would be up to the city staff to administer that, but you said what you want done, so they'll deal with how to collect it. And that, that's the conclusion of my notes.
That'd be excellent. Mr. Bullock and Mr. Benson, I have you up on here. Did you have something to say?
My, my comment was on per diem, and I was going to speak on that there's a chart for every city, how much you get breakfast, lunch, and dinner, no matter where you travel in the United States. In Minneapolis, it's so much, but in Washington DC, it's more because the cost of living's more. So it's, yes, TSA got it. So it's, that was, but that was...
Mr. Benson, did you have something or extra?
Yeah, I do. It just seems to me like we're getting the concept of what a per diem is, which means per day. That's literally, is what... That's literally is what the Latin means, per day, per diem, and not per meal. What if your actual expenses for the day exceed your per diem? Are you gonna get reimbursed for those?
No.
And what if your actual expenses for the day are less than the per diem? Do you have to give a refund to the city for those?
Not, not the way this is written unless that's because your meal was paid for by someone, another entity.
Unless the meal was paid for by another entity.
Yeah. I mean, that's the way I got this written. It gets to be a nightmare if you're gonna get into, if this is ten dollars over, five dollars over, I mean, that...
The whole per diem thing is a nightmare. We just need to go with an expense advance and let people account for it when they get back. I mean, it's a lot easier, I don't know. I'm not gonna get either one of them.
So that, those are my comments.
Okay, Mr. Mackel Downey and then Mr. Bullock.
I think to Mr. Benson's point, he got to where I was trying to get and didn't get earlier. You, uh, you don't account for receipts, or if you, the only way to have to give back out of your per diem is if somebody else paid for your meal. Well, what if I choose not to eat breakfast and I choose not to eat lunch, and I pocket the dollars? There's no record of it. There's nothing that says I didn't do that. I guess the point is, it's money that shouldn't transfer hands unless it's going to the payment of a debt incurred to by a council member. It's that simple.
My turn?
Oh, I thought you already had your turn.
No, I, I, I'm going to totally disagree with them, because each time they say this, they're saying this from their standpoint. They are standing on a point that they understand and they make. There are people here that need the per diem before they go.
That's if then it's an advance.
Okay, no, it's per diem, because per diem is a certain amount of money that is advanced to you to eat on breakfast, lunch, and dinner. It's by guidelines the federal government puts out, and it says that here, if you're here for four days and you eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Now, let's get to the integrity issue. This is what you're bringing up. If you don't eat breakfast and lunch and you pocket the money, that's your integrity. If your integrity says that this is what you, how you're gonna make money, then deal with it. We cannot police everybody on this council. Now, I'm gonna tell you, it's just like Ms. Carson said, there's some people that don't want to take the embarrassment of going out if they can't run their credit card, knowing that they wouldn't be able to eat. Now, I only work part-time. I'm not gonna eat part-time. But if I eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner on my per diem, that is my breakfast and lunch and dinner per diem. If you and Mr. Mackadowney feel that you don't need it, don't ask for it. Quit trying to govern everybody on council by you. Just worry about Mr. Benson and Mr. Mackadowney. Per diem is a personal item. It is not for you to discuss and make policy for the whole council.
Mr. Mackel Downey, do you have another comment, or?
No, I don't, I don't want to get this spiraling any further down than it has.
I, I think I understand why my two seatmates decided not to come in today, because it doesn't really impact them, and I had a feeling this wasn't gonna go quite as long as it has. We have just gone through the first of three of these. If, in fact, we're gonna do this to the next two, expect that at eleven o'clock, we're gonna ask, do we continue on with what's left at this meeting?
Well, the good news, Mr. Mayor, is that you've already discussed discretionary funds, so I've just got two points that I wanted to raise.
So we're done now with travel and events? Okay, we're moving on to discretionary funds. Mr. Gaylor?
Okay, the, there are two items I've got that were, well, three items that were not really decided at the last discussion, and we left it, uh, for me to draft as best I could, and I did. The one item is, uh, I've added, um, on page one ten, under sub-paragraph B four, attendance as a member of a committee that serves a governmental purpose related to the activities and functions of the city, sets as attendance as a member of a Colorado Municipal League Committee or National League of Cities Committee. Now, these are things that will be paid for out of discretionary funds if and only if they're not budgeted in the legislative committee, councilman, or legislative budget. Councilman Bullock addressed this at length earlier. So we start with the idea that the legislative budget covers things, but this is a catch-all. In the event they don't, for whatever reason, then you've got this fallback position. That's one thing. Then, uh, the next thing I wanted to bring up is E, sub-paragraph E on page one eleven, when expenditure involves more than a hundred dollars, the council member shall inform, and here you have to decide, who do you want to give approval for these expenditure funds if the dollar amount is greater than a hundred dollars? And that was thrown out there as an item, and I picked up on it. So if it's a hundred dollars or less, then the council member can go ahead and expend it out of his discretionary funds, as long as it's for one of these purposes that's spelled out here. But again, it's a self-monitoring thing up to a hundred dollars. Over a hundred dollars, then, as this is drafted, you need approval from somebody. Up to now, you've been getting approval from me as your city attorney, but I'm throwing out there, the mayor, committee of two council members, city attorney, or other option, as you, as you choose. What's been happening in the past, the council member wants to use discretionary funds. They call me and say, Bob, this is what I have in mind. Is this in line with what the policy is? And I review it, and I say yea or nay. And I have said no on occasion. But, um, you have to decide who you want to be able to monitor this thing, over, over a hundred dollars.
I, I like the idea of you doing it because of the legal side, but I'd also like to see council be notified. But, Mr. Moreno, you wanna go first?
I'd agree with the mayor, actually, that I think council should be notified as a whole, not a committee of two, not just the mayor, but the council as a whole.
Now, excuse me for interrupting. Are we talking about notifying in advance? Because when you get more than two, you got the open meetings log to deal with if it's outside a council meeting. So that's why I said two.
I meant that...
Afterwards?
You're next.
No, the notification should occur before the event and should occur to the entire council.
At a council meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Good, Mr. Mackel Downey, you're next.
I was just gonna suggest a similar approach, I guess, uh, if we agree that between a hundred and, I guess it's three fifty. Three fifty is the threshold for approval by the city manager in our travel policy. To me, it would make sense that it's essentially an administrative approval, right? Between a hundred and three fifty, it's essentially goes through the city attorney's office for approval, and that we get, uh, I wasn't gonna say in advance, but I was gonna say essentially a summary of, you know, some prior period each week or at some interval that says, these are the approvals that have been granted, um, so that it's essentially an accounting of those approvals, um, rather than a, a preview, because we've given him the authority to make the approval, and by putting it out ahead of time, are we saying that we're gonna preempt his decision on a specific line item or really look at a, a pattern that might be present after the fact? I think, is my sense, if that makes any sense.
Does. Mr. Bullock?
I agree, um, wholeheartedly, that, um, city attorneys should have prior approval, but before the travel is made, it come back to the city council prior to the travel, unless it's no way possible, it's like an emergency trip or something. But we do get notified that between a hundred and three hundred and fifty was going to, Bob okayed it or denied it. If that person wants to go to the whole council and ask for council permission, then if Bob says, I don't think this is a good, and I've got a hunch, if Bob says he doesn't think it's, uh, worthy travel, the council isn't going to go to, along with it either.
Okay, good. Your answer. Is that it? We okay?
I don't know what the answer is here.
Yes. Goes to you. Goes to you with notification to the council.
Yes, Bob, uh, goes to you, uh, if it falls within the administrative level of up
to a hundred dollars. And then also, as councilman, maybe some middle ground between the mayor's proposal and Councilman Mackel Downey is that we do get a notification, whether it be just a sheet that says, uh, that the discretionary funds were spent on X item.
So I'll notify council by, I'll notify council by email, then when the...
Or the individual council member. I mean, they can also inform.
Well, it's probably, since I may have a number of them, I could combine them all in one notification that way.
That's fine.
All right, now what's the number? Is it a hundred dollars or three fifty?
Between a hundred and three fifty.
Oh.
Anything over a hundred and less than three fifty.
Okay.
I thought that's what we...
What if it's more than three fifty?
Yeah, what if...
Anything more than three fifty definitely has to come to the full council.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay.
Anybody have a problem with that?
And then the last paragraph, I'll change that consistent with what, that's sub-paragraph I, the last one in the policy. Change that to make the individual who fails to attend personally responsible, just like we did under the travel fund.
Great.
Okay, that's it.
That was way too easy. Okay, Mr. Flannery, on to legislative budget.
This should be the easiest one.
Yeah, I heard that before.
We, you know, we, we talked about in, um, the tab eleven or the discussion on the expenditures for events and travel. We talked about really all of the things that go into what you all, uh, want to attend professionally for the council, for the city, and for constituents, to really bring back knowledge, uh, to the city. And at the September twelfth council meeting, or council retreat, I'm sorry, uh, there was a lot of discussion. Generally, the budget for the council was approved, except you wanted to come back and have a conversation about the policy, and you wanted to have a conversation about specifics within, uh, those, those areas where travel, uh, was involved. So most of this, uh, that we gave you that's in your packet, uh, is mostly involving, um, other types of issues, except where you see on, uh, the bottom of page three, you'll see, um, and, and just so you know, on the left-hand column, it says council retreat. That's a way of the staff tracking which version this is. So this is a, this is a post-retreat, um, item, in case you were wondering what that meant. Draft three. So, um, but you'll see, uh, CC, BPA, Metro North, miscellaneous tournaments, you'll see, um, Quality Community, you'll see Stout Street, um, and then you'll go in, um, as you, as you go further, you'll see specifics on, um, other, other types of travel. Whoops, I think I have a page missing.
Page two.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Page two, yes. So in, yeah, on page two, you'll see, uh, CML, um, Denver Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Dr. Cog, Metro Mayor's, miscellaneous, Metro North Chamber, NADA, NLC, NOICE, Rotary, WIMIC. These are all, uh, these are all expenditures that we've budgeted for, for next year. If, if the council wants to add to them, subtract from them, this is the opportunity to do so, um, as, as this will be one of the final things that goes into the budget before we come back to you later on this month for approval of the, uh, 2012 budget.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Carson, I know that WIMIC has been important in the past, but being here, gonna be the last woman here, are you interested in picking that up?
But did you just ask me?
Women in municipal government has been important in the past.
Yes, I would be very interested.
But you would be the only person, I just, that was the only one that I knew that we could pull out if, if you weren't, weren't interested.
No, I would be interested.
Okay.
Or do you want it, Renee?
Because there's, other women running for...
If they were to win?
But if they win, can they also be in women in government?
I don't, that's your answer, that's not mine.
Okay, because see, what we're doing is, we're scheduling for one person at fifty dollars. How would we do that?
Oh, it's...
Say, um, three women become on council.
Well, the, the whole, the whole purpose of the budget is to budget really what you think the expenditure may be. So, so, um, if you thought that, uh, you needed to budget a hundred dollars and you only spent fifty, well, that would just run over into, uh, into the, um, general fund for the next year.
Did I miss the line item on the travel for that? Because that's been a couple thousand dollars each time to go to those conferences. And I, it might be somewhere else, I just don't see it.
I believe it's under, um, Mr. Aker mentioned, uh, miscellaneous travel.
Okay.
But I don't think we should...
As long as it's in there.
I don't think we should categorize it there. I think we should pull it out there and specifically cite it.
Yes. Because then people will know that that's what it's for, rather than just because they wanna go to something. They're miscellaneous.
You'll notice, um, in career development meetings and conferences, there's a, a miscellaneous meetings, and I have a list of what those are, because I asked, um, that was a fairly decent number.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of those involve, um, you know, the IBTTA, um, conference, uh, six hundred dollars, um, Brighton, uh, and Commerce City Meeting, that would be like the joint council meeting, two eighty-nine, um, meeting, uh, executive breakfasts, um, with AdCog, Colorado Municipal Clerk, CM, CMCA Annual Luncheon, City of Aurora, AdCog Dinner, um, where council members attended, um, council dinners that council may be, council members may have, uh, been reimbursed for after retreats, um, a number of different ones, and I can give you a specific list if you want, you want me to email that to you.
What's on there?
That, that, that's a separate list, it's not actually in your packet. It's one that I'm just reading off of, that goes into that miscellaneous meetings. But if there are items now, NLC Seattle, that's on there, that was a one-time thing.
Yep.
So, um, that really just did come out of a specific, um, request by NLC for us to attend that, um, and that's what, that's, uh, that's what that reflects. So I wouldn't anticipate that'll be an additional special trip for next year. But this is where you have an opportunity to say, here's what we do, here's, here are the groups that we're, um, specifically needing to travel to, and, uh, council, we want you to, um, bless this, and so we'll put that in the budget. If there are things that we need to take out, uh, this is the opportunity to do that, so forth.
Okay, and, and again, I'm not gonna be here in twelve, but I know we went through this last year, show nine people going to Washington, we show four people going in the fall, but then nine people went. There, there needs to be some agreement from the council that is here, that if you say there're gonna be four people go, there's gonna be four people go, that you're not gonna go to staff and say, oh, by the way, come up with the money to send the other And that's gotta be a, a council decision. Uh, Ms. Carson?
I was a little confused on this. Page one, it shows the earnings, and then I don't understand why we're showing the tax.
Showing the, I'm sorry?
Uh, we show the, uh, federal tax, withholding tax, the Medicare tax, is there...
Because those are withheld from your, your pay checks?
From our pay.
Yes.
So that's the only reason it's there.
Yes.
And then, um, can you tell me why Sand Creek-Greenway partnership is in, I don't understand why it's in the legislative budget?
Um, it's been in there since before my time, but maybe Mr. Aker can, eh, expand on it.
Mayor and council?
No.
Now let's try it.
There you go.
Mayor, council members, um, several years ago, I think this dates back to when Scott Jakowitz was on council, he asked that, since the city had been helping... as a standing item within city council's budget, so hence it's been in the city council legislative budget for at least the last six or seven years as a standing item to be budgeted, because we've actually ended up doing it every year.
Okay, thank you, and I don't know what resident employee relations is. It's above the Sand Creek, so it's on page two, top line, very first thing that's listed.
That may be an instance where there is a coffee, or there is a situation where you're meeting somebody for breakfast or, or lunch, that you have specifically with someone, and it looks like the, looks like the, looks like there hasn't been much of an expenditure in that line.
We used that, when we did the Derby thing, where we had the seniors, we met them at Derby, that would be one of the reasons why you would have that expense on here, so we could have the coffee and refreshments and everything, you know?
I understand now.
Okay.
And then.
It's strictly for, if we want to have a meeting with a group of citizens, and we're going to use a city offer, or rec center or something that we don't have to pay for, but we want to have refreshment for, this is a fund that we can use for those expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, going back to Sand Creek.
Oh, okay.
Sand Creek is a payment we pay every year, we are obligated to pay for, it shouldn't be in the legislative budget for council, it should come out of the general fund, because we are part of a three-member partnership that pays towards Sand Creek each year, and for that to be in our budget, it shouldn't be in the, I don't know why Scott would ask for it to be in the council budget, because the council doesn't pay for it. This is part of the city doing the trail and mediate, mitigation, and everything else.
I believe it was put in the legislative budget, because it covers, it's not just a parks and rec issue, it's a citywide issue, and it was a specific request by council to put it in that location. We can certainly account for it any place you would like to, but it seemed fitting at that time to put it in the legislative budget, and it's, I agree, it is beneficial, and it's just a matter of where we want to put it. We can move it, if you, if you, if the council likes.
This is council's decision, do you want to leave it in this budget, or do you want it to go?
Does it make any difference as far as, as far as staff? Because I mean, if, if we're going to pay it in either case, and we can throw it over to general fund, does it make any?
I think, as I recall, it was a way of the, of the council specifically taking a general ownership of the issue, and wanting to track it, and wanting to make sure it was in there every year, and that it didn't, it didn't maybe get lost in some other budget, so they could actually see it. If, if you want to put it in the CM's budget, we can do that, and we'll, we'll make a point of coming back.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Yeah, I think just to piggyback on Mr. Flannery's comments, I think it was a symbolic request from Mr. Jakowitz to have it present in the legislative budget, to show that it's a priority of the council to maintain that relationship, that partnership, and look at it in a similar fashion to our Dr. Cog dues. Those benefit the entire city, they're nested within the legislative budget, again, it's paying into our partnership with the, within the Dr. Cog network, and in that instance, you know, we're getting services back from Dr. Cog as, as part of a regional partnership, this is really the, the parties that are specifically part of the Sand Creek Greenway, and so I guess in that spirit, I would say, if it's buried in the general fund, it doesn't necessarily come up in our discussion each year, it's a point of opportunity for us to reinforce that relationship with any new council member, so I'd say that's, let's leave it here, and it becomes a, you know, an ongoing line item that we, we acknowledge.
As long as it's symbolic, we'll put it in the council.
It's also real money.
And the next question that I had was, and, and Mr. Mackel Downey kind of touched on it, so this Dr. Cog $10,000, that's a annual fee that belonged to Dr. Cog?
Members of Dr. Cog pay in, an annual fee for our membership in the Dr. Cog Regional Planning Authority. We get out of that number of services, including, and Mr. Aker helped me remember here, or Jim jumped in, things like the statewide GIS, or the Dr. Cog-wide GIS, and satellite mapping, so that it allows us to update our GIS files, our satellite maps, so when, for example, planning is showing us the sun core activity tonight, they take charge as a regional project each year, or at an appropriate interval, to update those maps, and then we're able to take advantage of those as a Dr. Cog member. Gives us access to the classes, gives us access to a seat at the table effectively in Dr. Cog discussions, so there's a range of things. Am I missing anything? I mean, that's it at a high level, I think, but.
Well, you might just look at it as, it's like the dues that we pay to belong to Dr. Cog, and that's, it's based on the population. I mean, Denver certainly pays a lot more, Aurora pays a lot more than 10,000, but our, our dues, so to speak, are $10,000 a year to belong to Dr. Cog, our Metropolitan Planning Authority.
Councilmember Benson and Mackel Downey, that's correct, that's a good summary.
Mr. Bullock, are you done?
Oh, no, are you done, Ms. Cottrell?
Um, I, give me one sec, but I think I am. Oh, page three, bottom left in those green boxes, I don't understand, non-city agency grant program, general. It's what?
Yeah, that's the Quality Community Foundation.
I got it now, okay. And then, that was probably it, so thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
This, and I understand why you put it in here like this, on page three, and NLC Savannah and NLC Leadership Training Institute, the one that says Savannah, can you just put NLC Spring Conference and then the NLC Fall Conference instead of Savannah? Because everybody will think I'm going to Savannah each year, and each year, the conference goes to different cities, so I don't want, I don't want that to be a misinterpretation, because I would look up there and wonder, why is Renee going to Savannah every year, you know, in the budget?
Councilmember Bullock, are those standing, every year meetings?
Yes, sir. It's a standing, and this year, in the, instead of January, they're talking about April, which I, we don't know why they're changing it to April, but evidently, they have some greater reason why they're changing it to April, and still keeping it April, September, but I've got a hunch, after this year, it won't be April again, it'll be back to January, because April is too soon, right after we go to Washington DC.
We'll add that to our level of detail, thank you.
Is that all, Mr.?
That's me.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm having a hard time understanding any of this, because the point size of this type is about one point. Is there any way that you can pump this up maybe to five point, six point? This is really, I cannot read this.
We emailed this last week, so I don't know if your computer can blow it up or not, we can certainly send it to you again, and, and a bigger size.
Okay, but I mean, just printing it out, would it, do you not have enough room on, on the page to puff it up just a little bit? This is really, really small.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get a lot of data, I, I'm, I agree with you, I have pretty good glasses, and I'm having a hard time with some of it myself, but I think it's, it's the amount of data on one sheet, so you can actually see it.
And just to summarize, I guess what we're talking about here, it's the same that we've had, at least for this past year, and that is, the legislative budget is going to include the March NLC, the November NLC, and the June CML, and then, I guess, any other conference that the council would approve, a council member going to, and that anything else would have, would come out of the discretionary funds. Is that what I'm looking at here?
Correct. For example, Councilmember Bullock mentioning that there's a spring and a fall conference through NLC leadership that he's on, the council would approve those two conferences as part of this legislative budget. If you have a specific one that, that you are going to yearly, based on some group that you're part of, this is the time to say, here's the conference I always go to. Maybe you can anticipate another one, and that's where you would do the discretionary, but, but the regular one, you'd want to let everybody know now, so we can put it in the regular budget.
Certainly. Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Marino?
Just a quick question, on page one, item 715-000, facility services allocation, can you explain to me what that is?
I'm sorry, the facilities allocation is basically part of those, those fund balances that we've talked about, where we have IT fund balance, we have transportation fund balance, we have facilities fund balances. Every department gets a certain allocation for that, that goes into their costs, so that's a, that's a, it's a, it's, it's a budgetary structural mechanism that allows us to say, here's revenue that's coming into the city, we're going to specifically, through a formula, allocate each department a certain amount that's going to go into a fund balance. Now, if you recall, those fund balances are, are ones that we've gone in and taken chunks out of to fund the budget gap.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mackel Downey? Mr. Bullock?
I'm not going to speak for Mr. Marino, but Mr. Marino is on the Human Development Committee, and he should be budgeted for two steering committee meetings a year. If he doesn't go to them, it's just like Bob said, they will go back into the general fund, but he has the opportunity to go, and it's two NLCs. On the NOISE Committee, you can drop one from the NOISE Committee, because me and Ms. Teter are on it, starting in July, I mean, wow, starting in November, it'll only be me on the NOISE Committee for that, so just one dues, and the meeting on NOISE is all now, it coincides with the National League of City Meetings, so they don't have no separate meetings during the year, it's during the same time of both national city meetings. So, in trying to, I'm trying to save you some money now, so on the two NOISEs there, there's one for.
Aren't I the alternate, wouldn't I just step up?
2,000, and we only spent $50, which I don't understand if, I don't know if that was dues or what, because I think the dues for NOISE is something like, is more than that, but up above, in the next category, it's 800, and we spent 770, so I think that's the one that covers the dues, so.
And Mayor, you, you actually hit on one item, we have four attending NLC this year, but we put nine in there for next year, because we're, we're budgeting for the, assuming that the entire council will want to go to both DC and, I don't even know where it is next year, but wherever that is, we're assuming that all nine will go, or want to go. We're not assuming that, that only half of you want to go, unless that's what you tell us.
Okay, as you said, if you put in more and don't use it, that's better.
Yes, and I think that too, that all the new council people should be going and going to class, that's just my opinion, and, because getting off, especially for the lobbying, the Congress of Cities is one thing, but to go to Washington DC and meet with your representatives, and the lobbying effort we do, and going to our lobbyists, and seeing how all that is set up, I think the new council people should be, they should be the nine, and if somebody can't make it, then we can always drop them off and everything. Now, coming up, the National Congress of Cities that's coming up in November, from what I gather, sitting here right now in the dais, how many are going? Besides myself, I should say, me, you, Jim, if Jim gets reelected, so right now, there's only two of us going.
I'll be attending as well, Mr. Bullock.
Oh, okay, there'll be three of us. JD, come on.
I'm not sure I'd get up for it.
Okay, so, we're scheduled for four, and that's the, probably the most that's going to go, because it's in between that gray period.
I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say, if you haven't talked to Michelle Rogers by now, I hope it's not too late, because those hotels fill up very fast, so if you are going, contact her, I'll, I'll let her know that you three are going to go. I mean, I think you have talked to her, Councilman Benson, I know, I'm not.
I have as well.
Great, okay.
And, okay, and just going on that, because I listened to last week's, just so that I understand, Mr. Benson has two trips planned for after-election, that he will be paying for, and if he's reelected, the city will reimburse him those costs, but if he's not reelected, those costs are entirely his.
If he's not reelected, he isn't going.
What?
If he's not reelected, he isn't going.
Yes.
As I understood, what you just said, Mayor, is correct, that's, that's what I understood last week.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
A couple of more quick item, quick questions on these items. MNC, under where we pay our dues to organizations, is that Metro North Chamber?
That's correct.
Great.
Probably the gala, the gala dinner.
Okay. And, under outside services, Win-Win Coalition?
Yeah, that, that's a group, and I'll let Mr. Aker discuss it, but it's, it's the group that's come together to look at the remediation of the Refuge, so it's Shell, it's the Refuge, it's the Army, it's the city, does Denver sit on that too?
Denver, City of Aurora, it's more, it's kind of a regional group, it was started when the remediation got started, as a way, if we could find a use for like the concrete rubble, that someone else could use it, we could find a use, if there's a drainage issue, we could solve it with something else. We still meet quarterly, and that cost is for help with facilitation.
Thanks, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Bullock?
This is my last comment, and I want to clear up something. Mr. Benson said last week, if he wins this election, that conference he's going to, that Dr. Cog offered, he's using his discretionary money, and if he doesn't win, he isn't going. So, we aren't reimbursing him for anything, it would be his discretionary 1,500 that is being used to go to that conference, because he stated in the beginning, three were chosen to go from Dr. Cog, and he's going on his discretionary money, because he feels that this rapid transit summit is beneficial to our city, and he wants to be there firsthand, instead of trying to get a report secondhand. And so, I don't want everybody to think that the city's going to reimburse him for it, he is using his discretionary funds, as was stated last week, when the council said, okay, and Mrs. Carson said, if it was up to me, I'm glad you guys voted this for it, because I would have said no. So, that's. So, that's how that conversation went.
Okay. My question was, we had to make, it was my understanding from listening to the meeting, that reservations had to be made prior to the election. But it was his money that made those reservations.
You know, can I just chime in here and maybe clear this up? There could be an extra charge for registering for both of these things late, and I've discussed this with Michelle, and I said, I will pay personally any difference in the registration fee between the advanced registration and the late registration. I'm going to make my reservations on Southwest where there's no change fee, and if I'm not elected, I'm not going, I'll just use that money for other, other trips, but if I'm not elected, I'm not going anywhere to the High Speed Rail Conference or to NLC in Phoenix. It all depends on that. If that happens, then I'll get reimbursed by the city. But if there, if there are any late charges or whatever, or late registration charges, I'm paying that out of my own pocket. Is there any other matter about this that is not clear to everybody?
Nope. I think that works.
Actually, I'd like to reiterate, because I, I think, I'm really glad it was brought up, because I was unclear. The, the High Speed Rail Conference that's in the front part of November, you're, you're actually purchasing the ticket, and then if there's other costs that are higher, that you would, you would pay those, but if, if you're elected, then it would come out of your discretionary, that, that, that conference. The NLC, if, if you're elected, would just be reimbursed. Is that, is that correct?
I'm not understanding what you're saying. What I'm planning to do is make reservations for going to the High Speed Rail Conference, and then going to the, to the NLC in Phoenix, I think it's the very next week. And if I'm not elected, I'll just use that money for the future, for future travel. If I am, then I would file an expense report showing what my expenses were for the High Speed Rail Conference, send that in, have it deducted out of my discretionary funds, and then NLC would be handled the same way that it always has been. But if there's any charge that's incurred because of late registration, then I'm paying it.
Great. That's very clear, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
Good. We on to the next item?
Administrative Council.
Okay. Administrative Council business, again, this is not reports. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. I'm sure you're all aware of Stellato's grocery and deli that's up in the, the strip shopping center up around 104th and Chambers. You know, Mr. Stellato opened this about, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago. It was a welcome addition to the Northern Range where he does have grocery items, he has a great deli. I think he sells a lot of ice cream too. He told me he sold more ice cream than King Supers. Well, he's, he's very concerned, I think, about the, the opening of the King Supers, and what this might do to his, to his business. He's just an individual business owner. And he's not exactly clear, and I'm not either, about, what he wants to do is to open a restaurant, and to be able to serve beer and wine and mixed drinks in this restaurant, in, in his existing space. He's only about forty feet away from a liquor store, and I know there are some provisions in there about how close you can be, and I can see that we don't want more than one liquor store within two thousand feet of another liquor store, but I, I'm just asking, what, what is the provision for a restaurant that serves beer, wine, and mixed drinks, and its proximity to a liquor store? Is there any restriction there?
I think our in-house expert, I will give it to Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mr. Planery. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Benson, I'm not quite an expert on those regulations, but I do know there are some potentially conflicting provisions in the Land Development Code currently. In order to foster economic development in Northern Range, we are exploring those regulations and looking at some alternatives, and plan to bring forward some alternatives for City Council to consider as part of a list of amendments to the Land Development Code early next year.
Well, I would ask that you look at that situation, and that, it seems to me, we're not causing a problem by allowing a restaurant to be close to a liquor store, a restaurant that's serving mixed drinks and, and beer and wine, whereas we don't want to have two liquor stores within two thousand feet of each other, but with a restaurant, it seems to me like it's a different thing, and I would ask that some provision be made for that. I mean, not just for Mr. Stellato, although that's something that would greatly help him, given the imminent arrival of King Supers, and nobody's against that. We all want King Supers to come in, but he's being put in kind of a precarious position because of that, and I would like to make sure that he's able to run a business, and if that business is a restaurant that serves beer and wine and mixed drinks, I think you ought to be able to do that. So if you can just look at that and maybe give that as an alternative in what you're going to come back with, I'd appreciate it. I don't know if that takes a consensus of the council, or what, but, and I know that some other council members, I think, Ms. Carson and Mr., did you not discuss that with him, and Mr. McElDowney has had some discussions with him also, so I'd like to hear from, from those of you who have had a chance to discuss it with him. Thank you.
Mr. McElDowney, just a comment on this, or something different?
Same, same topic.
Okay.
I guess my point that I would make here is, my recommendation to Mr. Stellato was to put together something and come to staff and talk about this with staff, rather than have us talk about it up here, but I think that there's a very nearby example that, with Yum! Asian Fusion that serves liquor, and has a liquor store immediately next door. So, there's obviously some accounting for that in the current policy. I do know that there are broader issues about our policy, and I think that's the piece that we heard, we heard from Mr. McBroom, needs to be discussed, and I know it came up when we were talking about Land Development Code and other matters, and we've had some examples that have come through Planning Commission and before council in the last year or two about the proximity of two liquor stores in particular. In fact, this council voted down a new business in Commerce City because there was an existing liquor store in the county that fell within the radius called for, or called out in our existing policy. So, I think, you know, the feedback for Mr. Stellato is, bring the, the concept to the city and get guidance on what milestones need to be covered in order to transition his business in that way, and see if whatever has been made to allow Yum! Asian Fusion and the liquor store next door to, to work would apply in his context as well, but I do look forward to having the broader discussion on, on that policy when it comes up.
No, that's a good analogy, Mr. McElDowney. Thank you.
Mr. Marino?
Just quickly on, on that item, and, you know, we don't have to have further discussion on this tonight, because staff has obviously said that it'll come back in amendments to the Land Development Code, but the current process is that we do allow for those liquor establishments to be within that range of each other. The problem is that they have, they, there's an extra administrative burden in the sense that they have to apply for a conditional use permit, which is subject to approval by both the Planning Commission and then the City Council. So, I also look forward to staff maybe clearing up some of that language in the Land Development Code.
Mr. Bullock?
And the Liquor Board. So that's the third entity that, okay. On the, the letter that was given to me today, it says, Councilman Bullock requested Chief Bach about the landmark traffic study, and the gentleman that lives right up there said that they put down the strips, and they were only down for two days, and he said, is that common, that two days gives enough information to determine whether there's, whether a four-way stop is needed up there? And so, I told, and he just asked me that this morning, so I said I'd get to council tonight and ask the same question.
I will certainly verify with our Public Works folks, assuming those were fairly typical days in terms of routine traffic in that area, two days would be sufficient to do that analysis.
Okay. Thank you. I will report to him tomorrow morning.
Okay. I've got an administrative business tonight. We had an event, a community event for Bobby Crawl that was put together by a private citizen, but someone who used to be on council. When she did that, she did not take into account that there was a cost for the use of city facilities. Mayor Pro Tem Snyder, out of the goodness of her heart, tried to make good on this by saying she would pick up the entire cost. To me, that's not even nice. The fact that someone scheduled all this without assuming that they were going to have to pay for it, I think was, I don't want to say selfish, but maybe showed no for planning, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Snyder did a very nice thing by saying she would pay it all. I would like to offer up to council that if we split it among the nine of us, it'd be forty-seven, thirty-eight, and if we could take that money out of each of our discretionary income, it would not be a large charge to Mayor Pro Tem Snyder, but it's going to take the council to say, yes, we would be willing to do this, so that she doesn't get caught with almost a four-hundred-dollar bill. I am going to need the okay from council. I guess we could even do it, if some of us wanted to do that and put the money in, then we would just divide it up from there.
That's certainly okay with me, and I don't want it coming out of my discretionary funds, I'll just pay it.
That, if that's what you would like to do, that would be fine also. Mr. Gaylor, before I would offer it up, I want to make sure that that would be a legitimate use of discretionary funds, being this was a community event, not a city event.
Well, we're nearing the line, but I assume that the activity involved many city people. How many were there approximately?
Employees or people, or?
In general, how many citizens were there?
What do you think, Mr. Bullock?
I would think between seventy-five and a hundred.
Okay, and city council members were there, and you were engaging in discussions, I'm assuming, with citizens that were there. I'm, I'm reluctant to say no, but it comes close to saying no. I think the only way you could justify it is that you say that it was a social event where city council members had the opportunity to meet and discuss with citizens of the city, what's going on in the city, and the activities of the city, and you feel comfortable that that kind of social event took place. Now, if you can't say that, then I'm, I'm at a loss to be able to say that it justifies expenditure of city monies.
Okay, I'm going to have to go to Mr. Bullock, and Mr. Benson, and Mr. Marino to get an answer on that.
I can truly say that the people I talked to before, during, afterwards, and at the reception, there was not only Bobby discussed, but there was other city issues discussed, and I don't want to be walking on that thin line, but not only was it the city, it was the fire district, it was the school district, it was actually a citywide event that was... So, I would say, yes, that's what I would say. I mean, we wouldn't be cheating if I said this, because anybody that was there will realize that if you talk to any of the city officials, they have something to say about even the water being spilled and going to mop it up. So, I mean, we're, we're on a very thin ice, but it's still holding.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. McElDowney next.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just read for, for the council, one of the criteria that, that I use when I'm asked this very same question, it says, events including social events where attendance enables development of relationships with others that have the potential of benefiting Commerce City in the future.
Okay. Mr. McElDowney?
I, I think we're, we're sitting here trying to find a way to make what was, in all respects, a memorial for someone who is widely beholden as a pillar of our community. It was a memorial for Bobby. It wasn't a social event planned and hosted by the community to create outreach or develop business opportunities. I think it was the, the evidence of how broad an impact she had on our community is evidenced by the people that have been cited as being there in attendance. I don't think we want to establish a precedent that says, we're going to try and come back and approach future events of this nature in the same way. We didn't do so for others who have gone ahead of Ms. Crawl in recent times, who had similar position in the community, and so, I, I would follow with Mr. Benson and would love to contribute personally to help cover the costs.
Okay.
But I don't think doing so out of our discretionary funds is an appropriate precedent to set.
Okay. And, and I'm going to have to agree with you, but I'll be last when I say that. Mr. Marino?
I'll follow Councilman McElDowney's lead and make a personal donation, but not through discretionary.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, I don't have a problem with it being paid out of, if anyone wants to use their discretionary funds, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, and I, I don't think that we, as a council or the people of the city, would have any problem in determining who is a longtime pillar of the community. I just, I think that's a designation that only a few people meet, and I, this is not going to happen very often, but anyway, I'm going to, I will, I will pay it personally. I don't think that Tracy should have to pay it all. I'll pay it out of my own pocket, but if anybody else wants to use their discretionary funds, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay. I, I have the same challenge. I would be paying it out of my, my own funds, and we've lost way too many people and have not done a similar thing. An example I'll be talking about, Ms. Kimmons has an event coming up, who probably had as big or bigger an impact than Bobby Crawl. It was, I, I think my, my suggestion to staff, and again, it wasn't your fault, the person who pushed this is pushy, but when, when city items are up, the first thing that should come out is, who's paying? And again, in this particular case, there was probably some error in judgment on a number of people's parts, but I, I have to thank Mayor Pro Tem Snyder for offering up her own money, but I think that would be great if we each could at least chip in and make hers less of a thing on it. Mr. Bullock?
Bob, would you read that definition again? I know, I want him to read.
This comes from the verbiage that I've used in, when I get a call from a council member asking me, and I used it in drafting this council policy, the discretionary funds, so it's written in there now, if you adopt it. It says, this is among other things, but this one would be the most likely one to apply, if, if any apply, events including social events, so it's not limited to social events. It says, events including social events where attendance enables development of relationships with others that have the potential of benefiting Commerce City in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gaylor, I'm going to ask for a question that you may not be able to answer, but just listening to the people who are here, I think if there was looking for approval from the council, it would not be okay from discretionary funds? Should we take some kind of a vote from council, or should we?
I think, I think you should take a vote from council as to whether or not you're going to make the finding that it falls within that criteria.
Okay. Mr. McElDowney? Mr. Mackel Downey or Mr. Marino, would one of you want to make some kind of motion that goes along with what you were saying, that we could go down the line? And what I, what I think I hear is that this is not a discretionary item, um, but I don't want to be the one to make that. Mr. Marino?
Well, I don't deny that there were social aspects and it was paying tribute to a, a pillar of the community. Um, I don't believe that the original purpose was to be a, um, social event where any member of the general public, um, could come. This was for a specific memorial service. Um, as such, I don't, I would move that discretionary funds not be used in this case, but personal donations welcome.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Well, my position is, I'm going to pay it personally, but I would have no problem with anybody else using their discretionary funds.
Okay. Ms. Carson?
Um, I would not believe this falls under the use of discretionary funds. Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Marino's motion.
Um, and then I'm just going to go down the line. So right now I have two noes and a yes. Mr. Diaz?
I also don't feel that it belongs in the discretionary funds, but would have to contribute.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Yeah, not as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Um, uh, where am I? Mr. Bullock?
I feel like it falls under discretionary funds, but if, uh, they want to use, um, personal funds, I think that's okay too.
Okay, and my vote is also no, so it's five to two, so it will not be used from discretionary funds. Mr. Gaylor, just as my personal feeling, when we get on the line, we always need to go towards the other side.
Well, since it was brought before council, I wanted the council to make the decision, but if it were asked of me, if it's any consolation, uh, I would have declined the approval.
What I would suggest, um, Mr. Flannery, is, does the bill go to the city of, what I don't want to do is have the checks go to Mayor Pro Tem Snyder and then she pay, but...
It goes to the city.
To the city. Mr. Mackel, oh, I'm sorry.
You were asking the question that I was going to ask.
Oh, okay. So, um, what, I don't know if we just want to divide it up, and if somebody doesn't pay, they don't pay, and, and Mayor Pro Tem has already said she would pay.
My take is that. She's made a commitment. We're trying to help share that commitment.
Forty-seven, twenty-eight.
Great.
If all nine of us did it, that's what the payment would be. I'm just going to tell you, for me, I'm just going to throw in fifty dollars because I don't like having to look for the twenty-eight cents at the end of the month. But forty-eight, twenty-seven, forty-seven, I'm sorry, forty-seven, twenty-eight would be the division by nine of the cost of that. That's, so that's done. Uh, any other administrative business? Seeing none, uh, we go the long-range financial plan, Mr. Flannery?
No report tonight.
Okay. Let's go to reports, Mr. Flannery?
I have no report.
Whoa. Mr. Gaylor?
Nothing further.
Okay, where do I start so we get a lot of noes? Because I got a pile. Mr. Bullock?
I've got a pile too, so I might want to start with the end.
Uh-oh. You want to go with you? Mr. Marino?
Just want to thank all those that showed up for the Central Neighborhood Barbecue. Uh, throughout the night, we had about eighty-five people turn out, so great to meet neighbors and thank you Mayor Natell for stopping by as well.
It was fun. Nice turnout. Anything else, sir? Mr. Benson?
Yes, I had kind of a slow week last week. I went to the memorial service for Bobby Crawl yesterday. Uh, it was very well put together, very, very well run. I'm not going to make any comments about Texas A&amp;M blowing two twenty-point leads in the second half, two weeks in a row.
Well, I'm glad you didn't.
Maybe I'll have a better report next week.
I'm, I'm glad you didn't make that report. Ms. Carson?
No report.
Mr. Diaz?
No question.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
I actually had an item for council, uh, administrative business, but I'll present it as a question for staff. We can follow up later. Um, I had a question about, uh, the study, any studies that had been done on Jasper along, um, the west side of the park that separates Second Creek from Stewart Middle School. Have had some continuing inquiries from citizens in the area about, uh, street width, parking, uh, dangers with kids, um, et cetera. And I know we've had inquiries in the past relative to speed control, um, so wanted to try and get my hands on the historical record, if you will, on what we've talked about thus far, what studies might have been done, and then determine with staff if it makes sense, um, and with support of council, what action might, uh, be taken to do another round of analysis on that area. Thanks very much.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, it's just you and I.
Okay. Um, starting on Tuesday, I went to Analytica, Analytics for Smarter City down at the Convention Center, uh, in the morning, and it was a very good conference. They had a lot of, um, it was centered around Denver, but it could basically fit any city. And so I got a lot of good information back from that that, um, I can, uh, use with Commerce City here on how we can do things a lot smarter. Access Housing had their Fourth Annual Family Futures Award on the twenty-ninth. Um, then the next night, um, the Central Neighborhood Barbecue and the Blue Stem Banquet were the same nights, and I attended both of those. Um, next day, uh, we had the, um, the panel discussion for the National Site Selectors. Um, oh, that was the same day as the Blue Stem Banquet. This last week was so, um, packed full of everything, I don't know where I was at any given day. Uh, but I know I went to a lot of different things. I went to the Bobby Crawl Remembrance, uh, yesterday afternoon, and, um, the walk for, uh, the Run for the Cure was, uh, yesterday morning, and I can actually say after you find a parking space, that three-point-one mile turns into six miles real quick trying to get back and forth from your car. Um, so, um, yesterday was really a packed day too. Um, actually, I get to catch my breath this week because I think the big thing we have is tomorrow, the Taste of the Chambers. So, um, and then it's downhill from that. We have other events, but it's not going to be like it was last week. Uh, but the Site Selectors, um, meeting was very informative. Uh, you would not believe the criteria they use to select sites in bringing different companies to states and then cities or states and metro areas and everything. And it seems like Denver has a leg up on a lot of cities, but I think they say that to everybody when they're in their city, so they make you feel like you're feeling good. But we had a full table, so that was really nice, and, um, it was a really interesting, um, I would like to go to that every year. Thank you.
Well, that wasn't so long.
Well, I just started rushing.
Okay. Um, because I missed last week, I'm going to try to go pretty fast through mine. Freedom Rally had their follow-up, uh, from September eleventh. Uh, they were happy with most of what went on. A couple of their bills came in a little high. Looks like they're going to try to do it again next year. Uh, North Metro had their Development Breakfast. Um, Great Education, uh, did their luncheon on, uh, downtown, and what they're trying to do is get the schools back in line. Uh, Republic Service, uh, they're now all going to natural gas on their trucks, which is just absolutely phenomenal. Uh, Denver Botanic Gardens, Suncor, uh, was in with the Million Tree fundraiser with Denver, and, and we're also involved in that because of the Greenway. I want to thank, um, Suncor again for, for being involved in so many different things. Uh, we had the Volunteer Banquet here, which had a whole lot of people. Historic Society's event last Saturday was phenomenal, listening to the other mayors talk. And almost to every one of them, they thanked the mayor before them for what had gone on before because it made their job easier. Uh, Metro Mayors is now in, putting together a MOU with CSU, uh, to work on China because they do the educational part, and Metro Mayors will be doing the business part. So we've got an MOU that we're going to approve probably, uh, on Wednesday. Riverside Cemetery, uh, had their first meeting here for the group that's going to be working there, and as I stated before, uh, they, they will not be going back looking for water. They're looking for water that they can use on a piecemeal thing, but they will not be going back to sprinklers again because it's done so much damage to a lot of, uh, headstones and all that are there. Uh, a group called, uh, Save Our Youth had a fundraiser, uh, that I went to and, uh, listening to the kids that get saved because of mentors, uh, man, if you've got the time, this is the kind of stuff we should be doing for the kids. I went to both site selection, both Thursday and Friday. Head Start had a, uh, a little celebration because of their, uh, Community Garden. It was wonderful watching all these little kids who had grown up, grown all of these, um, vegetables and stuff, and it was funny because the corn was only like two feet high, and they said they had it grow that much so the kids could pick the ears. Um, Worth Manor, I was at Worth Manor but got called away, uh, due to a, uh, family matter, but I was also at the barbecue, which was really nice. Uh, the challenge was I didn't get food at either one of them, but I looked at what I paid, because I was the only one, I, that, uh, at Worth Manor was a donation to Blue Stem and to the site. Uh, one of the cool things that I did was Saturday, they had a, uh, a ribbon cutting for Bella Yoga, which is over in Bell Creek. It is so nice to watch some of our small business people doing so well. Um, this, I guess, is a lady who used to work at, at Our City doing yoga here, has, did so well that she's gone off on her own. She has classes every day, uh, phenomenal, and I'm actually going to sign up right after I get off here because my acupuncturist told me that that's the next thing I have to do is yoga. But, uh, their website is bellayogaincorporated.com, and it's just a phenomenal little place, and it's so nice because Bell Creek, they have the businesses underneath and the business, and the homes upstairs. And she actually lives like three blocks down from where this is, so very similar to what they have at the grocery store out at 104th. Um, I, I have to thank her. She had all of these people in there, and they were telling me how good I'm going to feel if I do this. Bobby Crawl was on Sunday. Boy, I'm waiting for that halftime job. Community Reach is coming up, just in case anybody's looking for someplace to go. Also, um, what is it? Alternatives to Family Violence is coming up. So, uh, you know, let's go, I'm, I, my, the idea that I was going to coast into November is just falling by the wayside. Um, if there be no further business to come before this council, we'll be adjourned. Everybody drive safe going home.